010192, in Title 17 zoning, Chapter 17.12 zoning districts. Section 17, 12050, district boundaries. The entire vacant parcel land off Biden Road, a portion of which is presently zoned Residence A, shown on assessors plan 3019 as plot nine, as well as the remaining portion of said parcel, which is presently zoned tran-unit development, all to be rezoned to open space. According to assessors plan 3019, said plot nine contains a total 99,550-plus square feet, properly located at number 00 Circuit Road, according to Quincy assessors plan. This public hearing is properly called, advertised, and was advertised in the July 29th Patriot Ledger, necessary to call a roll. Counselor Finn.
President.
Counselor Gattro. Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFarland.
President.
Counselor McNamie.
President.
Counselor Palmucci.
President.
Counselor Ramondi. President Coughlin.
President.
We have a quorum. One additional item, Mr. President, I received on Friday from the Quincy Planning Board at its open public meeting on August 11, 2010, the Quincy Planning Board, with all five members in attendance, voted unanimously to confirm its prior decision to forward to the City Council an affirmative recommendation on the above reference proposed zoning, as advertised in the public hearing, and it was formally counseled at 201... 2010051. It's now 2010192, properly advertised, ready to go. Positive recommendation.
We have a positive recommendation. As this is a public hearing, I will first open this up for those who wish to speak in favor.
Counselor Forrest is present.
Recognize Counselor Dan Ramondi.
Counselor Keenan is present.
My name is Dan Ramondi. I reside at 88 Elm Street within the city of Quincy and am here in my capacity as the Ward Two City Councilor, a member of the Friends of Faxon Park. I believe this is the third time that I've testified in favor of this rezoning request, and I'm hoping this will be the last, and that this will be a successful initiative that I've been personally working on for an extended period of time. I don't want to get into the details about how important this piece is to the Faxon Park redevelopment plan, but this is the best and highest use for this parcel. It's a landlocked piece of property that is undevelopable. It's my information that the city has worked on arrangement with the owner. I know there was some confusion over the past number of months. It's my understanding that those matters have been resolved, they've agreed to a price. Community preservation funds have been used to, as a resource to fund, the purchase of this property, and my information is, and perhaps Mr. Timmons, when he gets settled, can tell us exactly, my information is that the city owns this piece, but maybe, hopefully at some point, he'll be able to give us some advisory with respect to that. But it's a great initiative, and I would urge my colleagues to support it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Third and final call. Seeing none, I will close that portion of the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition or who is undecided? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition or is undecided? Third and final call. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition or who is undecided? I will close that portion of the public hearing. Mr. Timmons, if I could just have you address the issue of the purchase of the Biden Road property, what the status of that is?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. President, members of the council. The title is not yet vested in the city. The last time we spoke about this, there were some issues that we were reviewing, and I indicated to you, we're having our own title work done. We did have a second title search done that the city reviewed internally, and then we submitted it to council for the property owner. He reviewed it. There's an agreement about the parcel. There's been a deed drafted based on the description and the agreed-upon parcel that's involved, so we're all set, and they're in the process of getting it properly executed, because part of what happened when the title exam was completed was we found out that there was an estate interest that had to be addressed. So that's being completed, and there's no problem as far as the transaction goes, it just hasn't occurred yet. And I'm not sure about timing, simply because the seller's side just had something to resolve, but we expect it to happen in the very near future.
There's no impediment to us going forward, though?
Correct, because now everyone's agreed, and it's more just making sure that we get this little interest signed off on the deed.
It's certainly important for us to move forward, given the timeline of the public hearings and whatnot.
Yes, I think, I had thought before, I was very comfortable with the state of things before, because I had reviewed the title and everything, and fortuitously, all the work confirmed some of what we thought, and the seller's counsel agreed with things. So we're in good shape on this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Timmons. Counselor Ramondi, any further final comments? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Timmons. I will call, this public hearing closed, and as it is now 7:33, we will open up the special city council meeting of this evening. Mr. Clerk, if you could please call a roll.
This is Special Council meeting, August 16, 2010. Counselor Finn.
President.
Counselor Gattro. Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFarland. Counselor McNamie. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Ramondi. President Coughlin.
Present.
Eight members present, Mr. President.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. I know Counselor Gattro is on his way.
I ask you all to stand at this point for a moment of divine guidance, and I also wish to recognize two counselors this evening who have special memorials for Counselor McNamie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to tonight dedicate the meeting to a gentleman that was quite a figure in Ward Six, Tom Gil Martin. He was the oldest living city counselor who just passed away the last week in June, and comes from a large North Quincy family that is quite loved and respected. He's famous for being quite, I guess, perpetual consult of Henry Bosworths on the election results in the city of Quincy, even though he had moved to Wayman later in his years. He's also, he was a very, very strong mentor for Bruce Ayers, who he was quite fond of, and I know Bruce was quite fond of him, so we're sorry to learn of his passing.
Thank you, Counselor. I believe Counselor Palmucci also wanted to do a recognition this evening as well.
Please hear.
Perhaps if we can just wait a moment?
Excuse me, Mr. President. Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Earl Cuja, who passed away in July of this year. I want to recognize him for his service to our country and to our community. Earl was a lifelong resident of Quincy. He attended the Lincoln Hancock and graduated from Quincy High School in 1935. In 1941, he enlisted in the U.S. Army and was a sergeant in Company C, 34th Combat Engineers. On December 7, 1941, he survived the attack on Pearl Harbor and went on to serve admirably for four years in the Pacific Theater. Upon his return to Quincy, he married his high school sweetheart, Gertrude, with whom he raised two daughters. He went on to work with his brother Mike as an electrician in the city of Quincy. He was self-employed for 50 years, operating Cuja Electrical Contracting. He gave much to the community through his volunteerism. He took time away from his family and business to administer the annual electrical exam to vocational students across the state, and he was past commander and adjunct of the disabled American veterans, Kavanaugh Chapter 79, and a life member of the VFW post 1788. He was also a member of the Finnish Center, Finlandia Foundation, and very active in the Ward Four Senior Group. Earl was a true hero, and he'll be sorely missed.
Thank you, Counselor. I'd also like to make mention of the fact that the passing of Mr. Arthur Ruse, Kyle Ruse's father, in the last few days, I'd ask you all to keep the Ruse family in your thoughts and prayers as well. Could now turn and face the flag and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, item number one.
Item number one, Mr. President. Upon the request of his honor of the mayor, the sum of $80,000 hereby appropriate to reserve for appropriation tourism, saying to be transferred from hotel motel tax.
Someone to speak on that? Mr. Fatsies, are you designated hitter on this?
The, this is a customary transfer that is made every year, so this is not extraordinary in any manner, just money's moved over to support Discover Quincy from the hotel motel tax.
I see Mr. Carey in the audience. Did you wish to speak to this matter? It's good to see you, Mark.
It's good to see you, too.
I know you wear multiple hats.
No, I think, actually Jim said it well, but, you know, I appreciate, you know, you all supporting tourism, we have, I think that, you know, $15 billion a year is spent in Massachusetts from domestic and international travelers, so I think, you know, just to be here and to be consistent, to be a sustainable force, we need to, we need the funding for it, and basically, we're not taking out of anyone's, you know, the property taxes or anything like that, but it is, we are, we have had some trouble the last couple of years with our, with the 9C cuts last year from the governor, but we've still maintained, you know, a solid tourism presence, and we're up again a few percentage points. And I've left them all for you folks to take a look at if you'd like, and I don't want to bore you with statistics and numbers, but some information that we've kind of gathered and put out there, so.
Well, your packets of material are always very informative and certainly helpful to keep abreast of the good work that you're doing in regard to getting tourists to come into Quincy and spreading the good word.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thank you.
Counselor Keenan.
I move passage of the appropriation.
Counselor Keenan moves passage of the appropriation, seconded by Counselor McFarland on the motion. Counselor Ramondi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, the auditor. Madam Auditor, do you have information about the status of the account? I know that we increased the motel tax. Are we keeping up to where we need to be to pay some of the bills or not as a result of the increase in this account?
Actually, well, obviously, the increase has helped us. Last year, I believe our revenues were down, that was coming in. This year, for the first quarter, we are experiencing an increase in revenues received, and that was just in the first, in this past quarter that just passed us. So this was the first quarter that took effect with the new increase, so I'm going to assume that when we get our next quarterly payment, the end of September, that hopefully we'll see another increase as well.
There are some expenditures that come out of this account that the city is obligated for.
Yes.
Were we in danger of having a negative balance at the end of this fiscal, or last fiscal year, to pay the bills out of this account with the existing hotel motel revenue?
Well, we-
In particular, the bond issue that was-
The bond issue. At the end of this fiscal year, we did have a positive balance in the account, so I'm going to assume and hope going forward with this increase that we will be able to make our bond payment for this year, which I believe is around $842,000. But we should have a better answer, I would say, give it another quarter.
Would it be possible, Mr. President, if the auditor could give us a projected analysis of the, and I know it's difficult, it's future thinking, but give us your best analysis as to, with the new increase, when it takes effect, how much we can expect in this fiscal year, and then all the anticipated expenditures out of that account that we know are going to take place?
Okay.
Perhaps give us a worst-case scenario, so we can see if there's funds left over. I know we haven't had a tree planting program for quite a while. It would be nice if we could free up some money in that account, or there's always initiatives like Faxon Park that could use some money and things like that, so we need to know how much money is available before we seek, so.
Okay.
If we could have that, and then obviously, that would need to be on the agenda, I guess, under the new rules, so you folks to work it out so that we can talk about?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. So we have a motion on the floor from Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor McFarland, to approve this appropriation. Mr. Clerk, if you could please call a roll.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest. Counselor McFarland. Counselor McNamie. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Ramondi. President Coughlin.
Yes.
Eight members, Mr. President.
Eight members, and the affirmative of the matter passes. The next item on the agenda?
Next item, number two on the agenda. Upon the recommendation of his honor of the mayor, the sum of $35,000 hereby appropriated to Police Department contractual, saying to be transferred from the Waterways Improvement
Chief, did you want to, I see the chief's here, do you want to speak to this matter?
Good evening, counselors.
Good evening, Chief.
We're asking for 35, approximately $35,000 to be transferred. This is actually an offset that was put into the budget as an offset. $24,000 of this money will be used for maintenance of our marine unit. This will be the third year that we've actually asked for an appropriation from the Waterways Fund. $9,000 or $9,222 will be used for swimmers' floats for the Mound Street and Avalon Beach area.
Counselor Finn.
Through you to the chief. How much again for the floats?
$24,614. It's actually down from last year. Last year, we requested more approval for $30,000. And then $9,222 that will go to purchase. That really isn't a police department, isn't in the police department budget, although we will probably use that to purchase and set out the floats.
Is there, for $24,000 to police contractual, is that, that actually wouldn't be accurate then, correct? If the $24,000 is actually going to help support the actual boating component, that, why is that being funded under the contractual?
That's where we place it. We place it into our contractual line, and we use that money, those funds for the winterization of the boats, to open them up in the summer, to store them for the winter, maintenance, routine maintenance throughout the year.
Got it.
And the $9,000 actually is a separate item into the, that will be used to set those floats out of those beaches that I said earlier.
You all set, Counselor?
I am, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Forrest.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President. Chief, the $9,000 for swim buoys and more of to designate a swimming area on a beach?
Correct.
So the Waterways Fund is, comes from boaters who pay their excise tax to the city.
Correct.
And my understanding of the Waterways Fund is for improvements on the water, which we have a lot of problems on the water that are very expensive, like the public landing.
Mm-hmm.
Huge problem. The ramp, the floats, the gangway, or new gangway, a very large expense that we felt it was unaffordable, we keep putting Band-Aids on.
Mm-hmm.
I'm surprised to see $9,000-plus dollars coming out of the boater's excise tax when we do have a park department that handles Quincy's beaches. To me, this expense belongs in their budget, not utilizing the Waterways Funds.
I think I was probably asked to put that through our budget, because we'll probably wind up putting those buoys and whatnot in. Our marine unit will probably take care of that, the installation of those buoys.
And has there been a strategic plan about where throughout the city we might need these buoys? Because I know myself, in meetings with members of the boating community, with the head of the marine unit, Lieutenant Gillen, there's been discussion that we need to be looking at the Waterways Funds, looking at the needs of the city holistically, and making decisions that way, instead of area by area, ward by ward. So to me, there's a lot that needs to be done, and $10,000 is a big chunk, when you have the whole city utilizing, say, the PL, the ramp, the floats, and that's in serious disrepair, and it's the only free public access boat ramp in the city, and that's 25% of the money that we know, we were lucky to, through the great work of your department, really Band-Aid together to get us through this season, but we need in the off-season to be looking to use that money potentially as well. So I'm very concerned, I think swim buoys for utilizing for the beach end, to me, would be something that would belong in the parks department budget, as opposed to the boater's excise tax monies.
I understand. I'd be glad to work with you on an improvement plan with the Waterways through Lieutenant Gillen. I know he's very well-versed in what the needs are of the boating community, and I do know that the public landing is an issue that we probably had to address or will have to address going forward. I'd be glad to work with you on that, and like I said, we can involve Lieutenant Gillen, who I know is down there on a daily basis.
Yeah, and, you know, that's, we just have a lot of problems on the water that I think are coming at us, so that was just a concern I had, I felt, swim buoys more at the beaches. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ramondi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, one of the problems of, on the water, are youngsters being in close proximity to boaters, who, for whatever reason, become too close and encroach upon the swimming area. It's my understanding that Lieutenant Gillen happened to be out there one day when he was making observations about where to actually place the buoys, and where he was proposing to place them, there was a pleasure craft vehicle, and I don't know if there were some kids in the water or not, Lieutenant, but we've been very, very fortunate not to have some serious problems with swimmers, especially young-age swimmers. This proposal, this initiative is something that this community has been seeking for an awful long period of time. A number of months ago, I asked the auditor how much money was available in the account. We asked the auditor and the city solicitor if this was an appropriate transfer or an appropriation, indicated that, that it was, so we haven't surprised anybody, there's nothing unusual here. This is a very appropriate use of public dollars to protect the swimmers at Mound Street and Avalon Beach, and for $10,000, it's well worth the investment. And it should come from the boating community, because of the relationship between boaters in these, in these two particular neighborhood beaches. So I would ask my colleagues to support the initiative, both to fund the marine unit, as well as these buoys that are long sought after. It is a public safety initiative, and these funds will be put to good use, and hopefully be before the end of the swimming season, so, thank you, Mr. President.
I'm assuming you're making a motion, Counselor?
Yes, well, he's the finance chair, if he wants to do it, or I'll make-
Counselor Keenan, did you want to?
Just a question through you, Mr. President, to the chief. How long will it take to purchase these and get them installed? Is it going to happen this swimming season?
We'll make every attempt to have it happen before the end of this bathing season. If not, it'll be the first of, first priority in the spring. We hope to get them ordered and up and implemented or installed prior to the end of the boating and bathing season.
My only thoughts, Mr. President, and I understand the need for them, and I think there's a need with the same logic, I think Counselor Ramondi's logic is solid, that boaters do put swimmers at risk, but I know that there is a citywide issue as well. I know down in House Neck, it's the same issue, where boats come in and out of the Quincy Yacht Club, and there's kids jumping off the PL. I know it's an issue there. I know it's been an issue out in the area of Squanum. So my thought is this, is the likelihood of these being put out to bid or purchased at $9,000, you'd have to get at least some quotes, I believe, for purposes of purchasing these, to get them ordered, to get them here, and then to get them in, where halfway through August, as it is, kids go back to school right around the 1st of September, the likelihood of these being put to good use between now and the end of the summer, so to speak, is pretty minimal. I don't think it will occur. So might the better plan to be, be to look at these as a citywide issue, as the chief has indicated, Counselor Forrest has indicated, come up with a plan, and perhaps the Mound Street and Avalon Beach is the first one that we do in the spring. That's the first one that has been brought up. It's one that seems to need attention, but that it'd also be looked at on a citywide basis. This is the first time we've used money like this for this particular purpose.
President, if I could?
Sure. I prompted a question. Go ahead.
Before the meeting, I asked Lieutenant Gillen if he would be able to install these buoys by August 28, and there's a significant event at Avalon Beach, and there's going to be hundreds of kids in the water. And he couldn't assure me that they would be in there by August 28, but he had a certain degree of confidence that he would be able to do that. So I don't see the need of delay here, something that I've been working on for a long time. It doesn't take money away from anybody else, and this community needs these buoys, and we need them as soon as we can get them. And by not approving the appropriation means that we will definitely not have them for the balance of the swimming season, and what purpose does that serve? Whose purpose does that serve? Nobody. And God help the city council, the votes against this appropriation, and some youngster has a problem, August 28, August 29, or September. For what purpose? For what purpose? It's legitimate expense, there's a need, why do we have to bundle it with everything else? If the money's available, it's here, let's buy the buoys and install them, before someone does get hurt. There are two yacht clubs that have bought both of these beaches with rather large recreational boats, and there's no need not to have a buoy. City should have done it years ago. I applaud the mayor for finally finding the resources to do it. We ought to be thanking him for doing it, and then work on the other beaches and the other areas as well, and I'll give my support for those. I've never not provided my support for that, but to not deny this community the opportunity to provide some safety for youngsters utilizing the beach is just something that I don't think is appropriate. So if there's an amendment or not to pass it, I would, I would vote strongly against it, and I would ask my colleagues to support this appropriation as it stands. And again, if there's no motion, I'm going to move to, to approve the appropriation of $35,000 appropriated from the Police Department contractual from the Waterways Improvement Fund, counseled at 2010, whatever it is.
Counselor Ramondi removes approval, seconded by Counselor McFarland on the motion. Any further discussion? Counselor Keenan.
On the motion, just going back to the comment that God help the city council if somebody gets hurt down at Mound Street and Avalon, that would be unfortunate. We're also faced with the same situation, God help us if somebody gets hurt down in House Neck, because we spent $9,000 in one area and we didn't consider the other area.
There is this appropriation, and I'm voting against, you're voting against people who are sort of-
Counselor-
That's what you don't, there is no appropriation there.
I think I had the floor, Mr. President.
You do, Counselor.
And I would appreciate the council not telling me who I'm voting for or against. I'm voting for the citizens of the city of Quincy and all the taxpayers, and my obligation as a council large is to look out for the good of the entire city. And while I understand that there is an issue at Mound Street and Avalon, that can be addressed in the short term on the 28th, by having the police boat down there perhaps, by having a temporary system put in place for that particular day to safeguard the children who will be swimming down there. I just think that to go spend $9,000 in one part of the city at the expense of the other part of the city to say that, you know, God help us if something happens down one area and not the other, it's just not, it's just, it's not the way we should conduct things. And I'm not voting against the residents of Ward Two, and for that purpose, I would move that the order be amended by cutting it by $9,000, with the idea that we, the chief has indicated in willingness, that the chief and the ward councils or a committee of this city council meet to look at this on a citywide basis, and that all proper steps be taken in the short term for the event that's going to be held down there on August 28th, to make sure that those children are not put at risk, and that if there are any events elsewhere in the city between now and the end of the swimming and boating season, that we take all proper steps to ensure the safety of all children and all people who are using our beaches.
Chief, can I ask you, has there, has there been any type of look at this issue in a more comprehensive manner? Have you looked at other beaches, Wallaston Beach, Squanum, House Neck? I know I've been down at some of the beaches, and I've seen some of these personal watercraft come very close to the shore.
I know that we have looked at the public landing, I know that's been, actually, that area's been scrutinized. We've put Band-Aids on that area for the last couple of years. Lieutenant Gillen and his marine unit and his dive team have gone out every year, made repairs and whatnot, so there is an issue with that area. As far as the Mound Street and Avalon Beach area, I do confer with, concur with Counselor Ramondi, there are two marinas right there, there's also the Procter &amp; Gamble property of the old Procter &amp; Gamble Twin Rivers. It is kind of a hazardous area, I'm not sure how heavily utilized the beaches are, but actually, I was down there today to take a look, a final look before I came to this meeting, about some other issues that arose down there, and it is pretty, it is very well-traveled with boaters. Mound Street, that whole channel is pretty well, and pretty heavily traveled, and I know they're making some improvements in that area, and I think it'd be a good use of the money to put those floats in. We also do have, bids are ready to go out, Lieutenant Gillen has specced it all out, so I think we can expedite the process and get them in. Hopefully, it's optimistic, the 28th, I think, what's today, the 16th, the 15th, the 16th, so I think we'd have to move fast, but in any, in any case, we will have protection down there, no matter what happens on the 28th, we will provide the coverage, however you decide to vote.
And have you or the lieutenant looked at some of these other areas that have been mentioned as concerns tonight, in terms of protecting swimmers, installation of floats, and what it might cost to-
Not at this point, no.
Okay.
No. We have addressed some of the other needs on the waterfront, but that's not an area that we've actually- that we've actually delved into at this point, although we do intend to. There's also some of the infrastructure, not only there, but along the, past the Mound Street, down into behind the Quirk property. I know that's been, an area that's been discussed as well.
Counsel Forrest.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President. I just have a question from, whether you've decided on kind of, there's a tall white that I've seen some swim area buoys kind of in the water, not necessarily, you know, what the plan is for placement. I know that's something that the community that's met with Lieutenant Gillan has discussed. But there was discussion of rather, whether you have these tall, you know, similar to a no-wake zone, but to distinguish the swim area. You're not going to distinguish that as a swim area until you're on top of it. I mean, you know there's no-wake zones. You know, is that what we would be placing in order for those tall, it says swim area on it, very similar to the no-wake zone, or are these, you know, kind of swim buoys on a string that really sends a message to a boater? This is an area designated specifically for stringing, for swimming, is kind of roped out. Is there a distinction?
Are you asking me what kind of buoys we're buying?
Yeah.
I don't have the answer.
I mean, it's a big difference.
I can give you respects, but I don't know what they look like.
The tall, the tall white ones. To me, that actually is a confusion to the boater, to be honest with you, because to me, that says slow down, that doesn't indicate swimmer in the area. But Deanna Sturmsure, Town River's had a very great summer, as you know, the La Forest Girls of Monday through Thursday, swimming lessons, sailing lessons at Town River, they've been swimming there, you know, most, all the days, they've got such good weather. So, you know, I do appreciate the maritime presence down there. It's been a great season so far.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We have a motion on the floor from Counsel Ramondi, as the primary motion. We have a subsidiary motion by Counselor Keenan to amend the appropriation by striking We have a second on Counselor Keenan's motion to strike the $9,222. Seconded by Counsel McNamee. On the motion, Counsel Gattro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the auditor. How are you, Susan?
Good, how are you?
Excellent. The, how much did you say was in the Waterways Improvement Fund right now?
There, to date, there's $97,000 in that account.
$97,000.
Yes.
And this appropriation would bring it down to? And annually, we get approximately, how much in?
Last year, at the end of the year, we made a transfer from the general fund into this account of about $53,000.
$53,000. Here's my thinking. First of all, as a longtime member of the Beaches Commission, it's a good use of the money. I agree with that. As, I also concur with Counsel Forrest, that this is typically something that should fall onto Parks and Rec, and would be part of their budget, and I don't see why that it wouldn't be part of that budget. I guess my question through you to the chief is, chief, one of the things your predecessor, the harbor master, talked about was the establishment of what many communities, coastal communities, have is Harbor Use Commission. And to do essentially two things. One, bring together a coalition of folks that represent both the boating interests, as well as the swimming interests, and other interests along the water, to come up with a wish list of improvements for public access, for dredging, for, you know, swimming issues, things of that nature. And two, to make recommendations in terms of how to finance that, because clearly, the Waterways Improvement Fund is not going to get us to where we need to be. So I think Counselor Keenan is correct, that we need a long-term strategy. We need not look at this stuff on an appropriation-by-appropriation basis as they come forward, and because, you know, one of us might be an extraordinarily strong advocate for a certain parochial interest, that gets heard, and we're pitting neighborhood against neighborhood. I don't think that's the way to do it in the long haul. For the purposes of where we are now, you know, I think Counsel Keenan's right, it's probably questionable whether or not we can get there, but I do understand Counsel Ramondi has a huge event that the folks at Quincy Point look forward to every year. I'm going to support the appropriation in this case, but I'd really like you to go back and perhaps work with the mayor's office to figure out how we could establish a Harbor Use Commission. And there are many terrific models out there. I'm thinking about Barnstable, they've got an extraordinary group that does great work, you know, big coastal area there, so that we don't have to do this on an appropriation-by-appropriation basis. We can have a sense collectively, in terms of what the community and the stakeholders with coastal interests have, in terms of what they want to see happen, that they, that group can come back to us with an appropriate sense of priorities and sequencing, and that we can look at this and other revenue streams as we go forward. And that we, as a council, can have that composite picture of all of the needs, this funding source, so that annually, when we make those decisions as to how to use these scarce resources, that we have recommendations from a group that's looked at this from 30,000 feet, and says, this is what's in the best interest of the city as a whole. So I'd appreciate it if you'd take that back with Lieutenant Gillan and work through the prospect for making that happen, because I think it would have so much value for the city of Quincy.
We'd be glad to do that. As you know, we're kind of up and running as a late start, but we're very well up to speed now. Our collections are actually up on the excise tax and mooring fees, so we're going forward in pretty good shape. And I'd be glad to work with you on that, or work with the council, and put together a committee to study that. I think it's a good idea. But we do have to start someplace. I think the $9,000 to provide for the safety of the citizens down in those two beaches is money well spent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Finn.
Again, through you, Mr. President, to the chief again, just so I'm perfectly clear about this, is that there was an appropriation from the Waterways Improvement Fund last year to support the Marine Unit, correct?
Correct.
That's even when we still had a harbor master. At that point in time, there was that.
Correct.
So this transfer has absolutely nothing to do with that specific issue per se?
Has nothing to do with it. Actually, it's less than we asked for last year. It's $24,000 last year, we asked for $30,000, and the prior year was $28,000. So there is a history there.
Right. Again, because I have still strong feelings related to that particular policy decision and the authority of the mayor to do it, but seeing it from this aspect, I would not be likely to support severing it at this point, if I'm going to vote for it. But thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Once again, we have two motions on the floor. The first would be the motion to strike $9,222 from the appropriation as it presently stands. We have a motion and a second. Counsel McNamee.
I just want to say that I'm going to vote to strike the additional amount for the floats, because I think that we're in a dangerous area when we're making decisions without a dialogue beforehand about the competing needs and interests. And I think that if there's a landing that's being used, and it presents a public safety hazard, obviously, I don't want to be responsible for having someone falling and breaking a hip or breaking a leg because that was inadequately maintained. So I think the spirit of what Counselor Keenan is trying to achieve by essentially breaking this piece out, so we have that planning dialogue, I think that's a very, very useful way to create that focus, although these competing interests are very hard to say which one is more preeminent than the other. But I do think that if someone had a severe fall and hit their head coming down one of those approaches to, you know, the floats in a marina, that would be equally serious. So I think that we need to create some additional focus. So I'm going to support Counsel Keenan's desire to break that piece out.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments on that initial motion? I just want to offer my own sense of things. It is apparent that there are a lot of needs that have to be addressed concerning access to and use of our waterways. We have 27 miles of coastline. There's a lot of assets there. And none of them are going to be addressed, I think, collectively in any one given year. I think we're going to have to piecemeal approach this because of the fiscal constraints that we have. So although I do appreciate the sense that we should try to get a master plan together, I think in the end, even with that, we're going to have to begin addressing these on an incremental basis, and I think that this does that. So I'm going to be supporting the appropriation as it exists. Having said that, Mr. Clerk, if you could please call a roll on the motion to strike the $9,222.
On Counsel Keenan's motion, seconded by Counsel McNamee to strike, a yes vote strikes the $9,222. Counsel Finn?
No.
Counsel Gattro?
No.
Counsel Keenan?
Yes.
Counsel Forrest?
No.
Counsel McFarland?
Yes.
Counsel McNamee?
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci?
No.
Counsel Ramondi?
No.
President Coffin?
No.
7-2, the motion fails.
7-2, that motion fails. The primary motion, which is, was offered by Counsel Ramondi, and seconded by Counsel McFarland to approve the appropriation as it was presented. Mr. Clerk?
On the original appropriation, Counsel Finn?
Yes.
Counsel Gattro?
Yes.
Counsel Keenan?
Yes.
Counsel Forrest?
Yes.
Counsel McFarland?
Yes.
Counsel McNamee?
Yes.
Counsel Ramondi?
Yes. Nine, having voted in the affirmative of that matter, passes the next item on the agenda.
Item pending in ordinance committee.
Thank you.
Mr. President, it's Council Out of 2010-154, the stretch energy code.
This matter was submitted...
This matter was submitted originally to the council on May 17. It was sent to the ordinance committee and sent to the Building Department for their comments. It was advertised in the May 27 sun.
Public hearing, June 21.
And the public hearing was held on this order on May 21. Again, pending in ordinance, 21?
June 21.
June 21, I'm sorry, stand corrected, on the public hearing. One is your pleasure.
We have the chairman of the ordinance committee, Counsel Gattro.
Mr. President, we took this matter up in the spring, and there was a discussion in public hearing, and we were poised to move it. The mayor's office asked for due time and due care so that they could have an opportunity to have public meetings over the summer. So with that, I would defer to Mr. Walker, who's here in the audience, might want to give us an update on that, so that we, I think we're prepared to take action tonight, but can't report back.
Mr. Walker. State your point of order, Counselor.
I believe the matter is still in committee.
We have a motion to remove the matter from committee. It's been made by Counsel Gattro for the purpose of discussion, seconded by Counsel Palmucci. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Walker.
Mr. President, through you, thank you very much. As Counsel Gattro mentioned, we had asked the council's consideration to hold off on a vote on this at its last meeting, just so we could do a little bit more due diligence with the public. And we have done that. To date, we had two public meetings over the summer. Those meetings were advertised in the newspapers, on the city's website, and through some other outreach mechanisms. So we're comfortable at our level that the due diligence has been completed, and we're comfortable, again, with any deliberation now the council's ready to have. We appreciate your patience with the administration on this. Just briefly, with us tonight is Jay Duka, the Director of Inspection Service, will be responsible for the implementation and administration of this, and Mark Breslow from the State Department of Environmental and Energy Affairs, and Mara O'Gara from the Massachusetts Consumers Energy Alliance. And they'll be able to answer any specific nuts and bolts question this body may have.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Counsel Gattro.
Mr. President, we had, as I said, testimony in the committee, we had presentations by some of the folks that are here before us, we have other folks on hand, if there are in fact questions. In my professional life, I have experience with a number of the energy issues, and the stretch code is relatively unique in terms of other states offering municipalities the opportunity to adopt it. We get credit towards the Green Community Act for it. There's a host of literature that we have in our possession. It clearly has some impact on construction costs, but those are offset, according to testimony from the state, I think it's the DOER, relative to the monthly energy savings costs. So I think that this is the right direction for us to go in from a climate change standpoint. I think it's a smart approach moving forward for, to be leaders in terms of energy stewardship, to demonstrate that the city of Quincy is ahead of the curve. We celebrated this summer, I think it was an $800,000 block grant that came through the federal government because of the good work that we're doing in a number of areas. This is another notch in the belt, so to speak, that helps us become eligible for additional state funding around green communities issues. So I would move approval and ask a second, but I understand that some of my colleagues might have some questions or concerns, especially of Mr. Duka and others.
Thank you, Counselor. Do we have a second for the purposes of discussion, Counsel Keenan? Do we have counselors who have any particular questions that they wish to put forth to any of the folks that are here this evening? Seeing none, prepared to take it to a vote? Counsel Ramondi?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. I have an amendment, Mr. President. My concern is for the, I've got some concerns about the overall cost of the enhancement of these measures on your average single-family homeowner and your, perhaps your average two-family homeowner. We've had much discussion on the city council about the condition of certain parcels across the city, especially those parcels that are in foreclosure, those parcels that we've viewed at public hearings as being deplorable unsightly. And I guess the question that I ask from a policy standpoint before I vote on a measure, is this likely to move those types of policy questions forward, or will it tend to deter someone either from rebuilding in Quincy, purchasing a property, and building a home? We know that Quincy has high taxes, it has high water rates, we have an affordable housing component that requires uncertain size properties to have either funding for the accommodation of one unit out of 10, or actually having to make 10% of the project affordable. We have tree ordinances, we have paving ordinances, so there are significant challenges already in place when it comes to someone either building a new home within our city and/or substantial renovation. We know the economic climate that we're in, you know that all the indicators, one of the things that they begin with, first, homes or home startups, what does that look like across the country? What does it look like in Massachusetts? How many people are building homes? Because what does that mean? That means that contractors are working, laborers are working, electricians are working, plumbers are working, carpenters are working. So we're looking at a municipality that has arguably 10, 15, 20% unemployed, underemployed. We have challenges like most communities on the social with properties that are going into foreclosure, falling into disrepair. So that's where my concern is, that in this climate, are we hindering job enhancement? Are we hindering the ability of your average single-family homeowner to make an improvement? So the amendment that I have, hopefully, will be adopted, that will resolve that. So the amendment, and I'd ask the solicitor to weigh in if it's not appropriate or better language, after the word, in its entirety, provided that no less than 50% of the building permit fee be waived by the city of Quincy for any and all single and two-family homeowners who are impacted by this ordinance. We've heard information, Mr. President, at the hearing, that this may add a $5,000 or $6,000 addition to your average home construction within the city. I've read other accounts and other newspapers that that number could be as high as $5,000 or $10,000 per unit. So is it good public policy to encourage people to construct greener homes and have less cost on a monthly basis? Sure. But the information also indicates, the information that I've been reviewing, that would indicate that because of the enhanced cost initially, that you may have to stay in your home for 15 or 20 years or more in order to recoup the value of the initial startup cost. Well, maybe that was the case 50 years ago, but that's really not the case today. Well, maybe that was the case 50 years ago, but that's really not the case today. Enough lot of people are buying and selling five years, six years. Someone to live in their home for 10 years today, that is an extremely long period of time. So this would enable a single and/or a two-family homeowner who are engaged in this ordinance that have, that may have additional cost of $3,000, $4,000, $5,000, $6,000, that would ordinarily have a payback period of 15 or 20 years, to now be able to, we are encouraging them to make the improvement. We are encouraging them to make their home more green because the city is a partner in providing a grant or, in this case, because it does not require an appropriation, they're just less money coming into the building department. My other concern is, and I think we have to deal with this eventually, if we're looking at hundreds if not thousands of units for the downtown plan and if you're looking at also a commercial component, if you're just looking at the residential component, if you have 1,000 units and if it does cost, I just take the lone number, $3,000 per unit, that's a $3 million cost. Over and above all the other costs that we're talking about, the affordable housing and mitigation and everything else. So we are adding significantly to the cost of construction, we know that. The public policy to offset that is we're reducing our footprint, energy costs, fine. My focus would be on allowing single-family homeowners and two-family homeowners, which really are the nuts and bolts of every neighborhood within the city, who are affected by this ordinance, to at least get an enhancement, a grant, a benefit of 50% of the building permit fee, that that be waived. So if it's $100,000 and if the improvement is 100,000, the building permit fee would be, what, Jay, $10 per?
About $10 per.
So there would be half that amount. So that's, I put that in the form of an amendment, that provided that no less than 50% of the building permit fee be waived by the city of Quincy for any and all single and two-family homeowners who are impacted by this ordinance.
Where are you suggesting that that be inserted?
My sense is at the end, so it, after the word entirety. Take out the period, put in a comma, provided that.
Is there a second for the motion and is there any discussion? Excuse me, the amendment. Seconded by Counselor Finn, any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Gattro?
Through you, Mister President, to Mister Duka. You probably didn't anticipate this amendment.
No.
But can you estimate the loss of revenue to the city of Quincy in building permit fees on an annual basis based on this reduction?
Are we talking just one and two family dwellings? I don't have the number of new buildings that we've built, I don't have that with me, and I'd rather not guess at it, but...
Tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands, millions?
It would be less than tens of thousands, I'm sure. The other thing, as you're talking, you were talking about the downtown and the many units, multifamily residential units. I don't think it's going to be 3,000 per unit on that. I think the formula would change because you're talking just kind of envelope type stuff, so that would be a little different. But I haven't had a chance to analyze the numbers.
I think I still have the floor. Is that correct? I just had a few other comments. Mister President, it's my understanding, and if anybody in the audience has different information, but I was consulting with Mister Fatsy, that this local option to adopt the stretch code will be the law of the state one way or the other, and I think it's two years. So it will happen without question to every community. We'll need to adopt that one way or the other. And my sense is that, you know, this action before then likely won't have much of an impact in the downtown. If we even get there, the question is going to be, when will the LDA's, land disposition agreements come forward? When will we act on them? When will the first permit be pulled and so forth? So it's questionable whether or not there'll be an impact down there. There's a Q and A on the website for the mass stretch code to the 780 CMR, which basically says, "Construction costs are estimated to rise approximately 3,000 for the typical single-family home and by 1% to 3% of total cost for commercial buildings." However, after energy savings costs on heating and electricity are included, these higher-performance standards save money. In addition, the state's electric and gas utilities provide financial incentives that further reduce the upfront cost of high-performance buildings. For example, a residential home purchased with a 30-year mortgage would typically result in net savings to the homeowner in the first year, in the first year, due to energy bill savings that are larger than the increase in mortgage payments from construction financing costs. Case studies of commercial buildings utilizing the improvements on which the commercial code changes are based have shown paybacks of one to two years. One to two-year payback, when standard incentives from electric utilities are included on the benefit side. As of July 1st, 44 municipalities in Massachusetts have adopted the stretch code. Many of them are cities bigger than ours, with unemployment rates larger than ours. New Bedford, Worcester, Somerville, a whole host of places, Salem, and many more have taken action on this because they know it's the right thing to do. They want their staff trained to understand where the emerging state code is going and they want to begin to really get ahead of the curve so that they can incorporate this in future building planning going forward. Many communities have lead certification for some of their buildings, you know? We don't have that. This is a small step, but an important step forward. And it's not like we're out front, ahead of any other community on this. We're probably, what, 351 cities and towns are in the top 20% moving forward on it. I think the state did a terrific job putting this together. I think it was well thought out. I think it's an option whose time has come and I think that the council should act upon it as is. I'm going to oppose the amendment that was placed. I think, you know, at a time, we just went through a budget season and we debated and we're, you know, we're literally groveling for tens of thousands of dollars to come forward on anything, whether it's schools, whether it's public safety, whether it's public works, whether it's some of the things that we all hold near and dear. And even some of that short money, I think, would be extraordinarily valuable when you take into account that any increase in construction cost can show a payback in one to two years. And the energy savings established through the acquisition of any of these properties or the restoration of any of these properties can have an extraordinarily short payback. A lot of folks are voluntarily doing it. All you have to do is look at the sales tax holiday and all of the appliances that were purchased. I bet when all is said and done, most of them were Energy Star and energy-saving type of appliances that are out there. Many folks get it. They get it. The average person gets it. You know, we adopted the Energy Smart Quincy this summer, which I think is a terrific program. We've had 100 people or more already sign up to have energy audits in their homes. And I think the folks here in Quincy want to be on the cutting edge of this and they know that investment in energy improvements is a financial savings in not only the long term, but the short term as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McNamee, then Counselor Finn.
I'm not going to be for this amendment, but I'm not going to be for the stretch code. And I want to explain both, to put it all in context. I don't want homeowners or any commercial developer to be mandated to follow a stretch code because it's mandated by the government. I think that this strikes at a fundamental philosophical orientation that we have to be sensitive to. Do we want people to conform their behavior because we have a big, smarter government telling them to do that? Or do we want to have very wholesome assumptions about human behavior and think that people do things because they make economic sense and because they want to have favorable environmental impacts? I think that, I'm going to make the assumption that humans, human beings, have motivations that are much purer and don't require cynical government oversight and government mandates. It's just a, philosophically, we don't discuss this enough. You know, we have, I think, too much government these days that speaks to, I know what's good for you. And, all right, maybe in two years, the state government's going to bring us down this path, but let them do that in two years. I'm not going to do it now because I think I'm going to have much more wholesome and optimistic assumptions about what motivates homeowners and large construction companies. I think they want to do the right thing by the way of the environment. And I think these days where homeowners are strapped, essentially, they can't, they may can't move out of their homes, they need more living space, I don't think I want to add $1 to any renovation cost that they might have to undergo. So that's where I am on this and it just, it has to do with a philosophical orientation that I think is lacking. And I'd like to kind of underscore what's going on here with some of this type of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Finn?
Thank you, Mister President. Again, Mister Duka, if you could come back up. I just want to make certain I understand this. The cost savings that Counselor Ramondi was, or the costs that Counselor Ramondi really refer essentially to so-called one-family and two-family houses, correct?
Yes.
And it might understand, what are we roughly saying? What does it totally add to the cost on average of construction of a one-family?
Well, all the seminars I've attended, I would defer to the people that are here to speak to it, but I'm hearing between $3,000 and $5,000.
Total?
Yes.
Total construction costs? Okay. I think I understand that. So the ability to recapture that cost is fairly significant, isn't it, within a period of time, based on?
Again, I would defer to the people that are here, but I know...
I know Counselor Gattro just quoted one to two years.
I've heard 30 years. I've heard one to two years, one to five years. I haven't really studied that at all. I'm just looking at the enforcement of it.
Well, there's a big difference between one to two years and 30 years.
I agree.
Is there anybody qualified to speak in relation to that?
I have not analyzed it. I don't know.
Maybe we could ask Mister Breslow to come up. I think he's probably the resident expert on this issue.
Thank you, Mister President. With the consent of the body, sure.
Sure, with the consent of the body, we'll have Mister Breslow, if you could approach. Thank you for coming.
Hi, Mister President, and council members, thank you for having me here. I'm the Director of Transportation and Buildings Policy for the state's Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. We had modeling done of different types of buildings for the stretch code. It was done by an independent consulting firm. Didn't address all types of buildings. So the primary modeling we had was for a, about a 2,700-foot single-family home. We also had a larger single-family home done and we did have a gut rehab of a triple-decker For the 2,700 approximately, single-family home, our estimate is about $3,000 in extra cost, which includes about $900 for what's called the HERS raider, the person who actually checks to make sure it's been done right. Of that, the utilities will rebate about $1,300 of the cost because they subsidize energy efficiency improvements. So the net additional cost is about $1,700. We then put that into a mortgage, 6% mortgage over 30 years, which gets you to an annual increment on the mortgage payment of about $130 a year. In comparison to that, we estimate a savings of slightly over $500 a year in utility bills. So you take away the incremental cost from the savings and we estimate an annual cash flow gain to the homeowner of just slightly under $400 a year beginning in the first year.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would say on the rehab, which may be also of particular concern, the requirements on rehabs are much more modest. The state's building code in general, regardless of whether you adopt this, but the statewide building code requires that on a gut rehab, you do a number of things, including insulating the walls and insulating the attic and air sealing the building. Other than those requirements, there's very little in the stretch code that changes it. Really, there's only two items. One is a checklist called the Energy Star Thermal Bypass Checklist that simply makes sure that the quality of insulation and air sealing is done well. And the second item is, if you're replacing windows, you're required to put in Energy Star windows. Those are really the only two differences.
Want to say, Counselor?
Thank you, Mister President.
Any other? Counselor McNamee, and then Counselor Ramondi.
Just a simple question, you know, as an advocate of the stretch code, which obviously you are, simple question, why should you be making decisions on what's good for homeowners?
Well, this is somewhat above my level in that I was not, I'm not the policy maker.
You're in the policy business.
Right.
You hold a policy office.
But I should say, it's people above me who chose to do this and it was actually the Board of Building Regulation and Standards. But nevertheless, I'll give you an answer. I think the implication of saying that people should make their own decisions would mean that we wouldn't have a building code at all, that builders and homeowners could decide on their own intelligently whether they want to put fire safety requirements, structural requirements, any energy efficiency requirements in. And clearly, as a society, we've decided that we don't trust that to happen.
We already have a building code, you're proposing addition to it. So what you just said is fallacious.
Counselor Ramondi?
The, you mentioned the cost of a 2,700 square foot home. How about a two-family, maybe three bedrooms in each unit?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we don't have specific modeling on that. I just don't have it.
Most of the homes in Quincy would either be single or twos. There are some threes, but...
For new homes?
Well, for the homes, well, yeah, for the homes that are here now existing?
Yeah, so I'm saying...
They're mostly singles and twos.
There's a big difference between new construction and rehab, so...
In most construction, would be single families.
For new construction, right.
Right.
For rehab, I'm saying that there's very little difference between the stretch code and the regular building code. Our estimate is, on the gut rehab of a triple-decker, was about a $1,300 difference in cost.
So the cost for triple, for a three-family would be $4,300?
No, no, that's the total cost. That's the total difference for all three units combined.
What's the total enhancement of cost, estimated construction cost with the stretch code to build a three-family home?
To build from scratch.
Build a three-family.
I'm sorry, we just didn't have that done.
I thought you say you did modeling for a 2,700 unit, a three-family?
The...
So you didn't do modeling for a three-family?
No, we did, we did a gut rehab of a triple-decker. A gut rehab's different from building from scratch.
Okay. And what, to gut a three-family, what would the cost be, the enhanced cost?
Right, so let me just be clear that the number I'm going to quote is just the extra cost, right? Is about $1,300 for all three units combined. But I want to just be clear, for honesty's sake, that that's just the incremental cost of the stretch code. The base code already forces you to put in insulation if there wasn't any, so we're not including that because you'd have to do that anyway. So the extra cost of the stretch code is about $1,300, which again includes the HERS raider fee.
And the 2,700 square feet, is that, would that be an average, single-family, two-bedroom or a three-bedroom unit?
I'm pretty sure that's a three-bedroom.
And you're indicating, and now how, do your numbers agree with the builders, the contractors, the folks in the field? What are they saying? What are the folks on the other side saying as far as what the costs are?
Um, yeah.
Because it is obviously somewhat speculative, somewhat subjective?
Yeah, it is subjective. I would say some builders agree with us and some don't.
So the ones who don't, what is the highest number that is reasonable? The highest reasonable estimate that would indicate for the average homeowner... The highest reasonable estimate that would indicate for the average homeowner what the enhanced cost would be?
Yeah. I don't think I have an answer for that. People have thrown around all kinds of numbers. So, you know, I just...
What's, from the other side? You've been to all these hearings, I'm sure that you've listened to them.
I mean, people have thrown around wildly speculative numbers.
I didn't say wildly. A reasonable estimate that just happens to be different than yours, what is that number?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I just don't know how to answer. People have given me all different kinds of numbers. I don't know how to distinguish between a responsible number...
Because I'm looking at an article that was in the Boston Globe, reputable paper, some time back. And there's a fellow by the name of Mark Keblak, co-chairman, Groups Public Policy Committee, Home Builders Association. They have 1,800 members. I don't know, is he reasonable? You have to meet the fellow?
The Home Builders Association has been fairly strongly opposed to this.
Is it a reasonable organization? Do they...
I would say their estimates of the stretch code costs are unreasonable.
Okay. Because their estimate of the average increase to the average home between $10,000 and $20,000?
Yeah. I don't think that's a reasonable estimate. Now, I would also know, what's the date on that, sir, if I might ask?
Yeah, I usually put a date on it.
I will say honestly that the week...
I'm thinking this was around, must be fairly recent. They're talking about Milton Selectman's, Milton Town meeting on September 20th. So, my sense is it would be more recent than not, but I'm really, I apologize, I'm not sure if you can look at it.
Yeah. Well, the reason I'm asking, actually, is that we did change our numbers at one point. So, there were other modeling numbers last year, in 2009, and the reason we changed them is that the state adopted a new statewide building code with stricter standards. So, before that had happened, we were still operating on the 2006 building code. And when you looked at the stretch code relative to the 2006 code, the cost increase was larger. But once the state adopted the 2009 code, it was already mandating new things, so the extra cost for the stretch code came down.
You don't oppose giving a single-family senior citizen, 85-years-old, a break, do you? Who's stuck in this situation where house burns down, needs to rebuild? Do you oppose the city of Quincy giving this poor fixed-income, 85-year-old woman a break?
I'm not sure that I should give an opinion on the city of Quincy's budgetary issues.
No, forget about the budget. I mean, from your perspective as a policymaker, advocate for the green, what difference does it make? I mean, you don't oppose giving a single-family homeowner on fixed income. We have 20,000 seniors in the city, a lot of them live in their own homes, struggling to make it by, and you know, $3,000 a year is a lot. I've made budget cuts that weren't worth $100 a year. I've supported some measures to offset taxes that have an impact of less than $100 a year. So, to give someone a $200, $300, or $500, in a sense, it's a bill that they don't have now, that is being mandated. And I'm just trying to find, in a combination, that for most of the folks out there who aren't fixed income, who happen to own single families or two families, especially those homes in Squanum that have a high-value, Marymount, some of the higher-value areas, for them to either rebuild, remodel, repair, or construct, this is going to have an impact on them. And they may not be around long enough to recoup the balance of what their investment is. So, I just think it's a reasonable compromise to move this matter forward, to give the single-family homeowner and the two-family homeowner a break, and it doesn't affect the stretch code at all. It just impacts the city not getting in as much money as it would, and it's an encouragement for people to go the route of repairing homes and perhaps rebuilding. So, thank you for your analysis. Thank you, Mr. President.
Amendment? Mr. Breslow?
Mr. Duker, actually.
Okay. Mr. Duker?
Well, it might be Mr. Breslow. What type of work being done in a house would trigger compliance with this? Would putting, I guess, what would trigger compliance?
Substantial renovations, new construction. If you were gutting rehab, tearing out walls, if you're able to increase the amount of insulation, then you're required to do that on a gut rehab.
So, if somebody owns a single-family home and they're doing some type of work, exactly what type of work would trigger compliance with the stretch code?
If you were completely rehabbing the whole house, tearing out walls, doing your kitchens, baths, all the rooms, you would be required to meet the code for the new energy code, the stretch code.
So, if I were remodeling a kitchen by just putting in new cabinets, new countertop, would that require stretch code?
No.
If I were painting in my house, would that require compliance with stretch code? If I were to knock down a wall between kitchen and dining room, would that require compliance with the stretch code?
No.
If I were to put new shutters on my house, would that require compliance with stretch code?
No.
If I were to put a new deck on my house, would that require compliance with the stretch code?
Nope.
So, essentially, it is a major gut rehab?
Yes.
And Counsel Ramondi wants us to believe that an 85-year-old who loses their house is going to face some sort of economic burden from this. Is that accurate?
Well, I...
I mean, wouldn't, let's put it...
I'd have to see the permit applicator.
Well, let's put it this way. Yeah. So, we're legislating by extreme potential unlikely anecdote, and if that were to happen, this is such a thing called homeowner's insurance that would require a house to be built to whatever code is in place, and the homeowner's insurance would require that. So, an 85-year-old male or female on a fixed income, living in Squanum, Marymount, House Neck, Quincy Point or Germantown, or wherever it may be, should not fear that if their house burns down, they're going to have to pay more out of their pocket because of this code. I think that we shouldn't look at that analysis, and I think that most homeowners who do the type of repairs that are fairly typical in this economy should not fear that this is going to add to any great extent to the renovation cost. Those who maybe do a substantial addition, that addition, I presume, would have to meet the stretch energy code.
Correct.
And when you're talking in addition, it depends on the size. It may be a very modest addition, and therefore, a very modest incremental cost associated with this. So, while I understand the intent not to burden single- or two-family homeowners to try to strike fear into the 85-year-old male or female living somewhere that this is somehow going to burden them, it's just unrealistic. It is an incremental cost, arises in limited situations relative to single- or two-family homes. We're a built-out city. There aren't many single- or two-family homes being built in the city. There are very few gut rehabs going on at this point. So, I'm going to vote against the amendment because I think, to the degree that it factors in at all, it would factor in fewer dollars coming in in permit fees, and I don't even think, with all respect, I don't even think that's a consideration because I just don't think it's going to happen. That the type of things that typically occur in homes as far as renovations are not going to trigger any great cost relative to this ordinance. So, I think we just have to get away from that and look at this a little more realistically. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Palmucci.
Mr. Duker, just a very brief follow-up question to what my colleague Counselor Keenan was asking. You had said substantial renovation, was that the term used?
Yes.
Okay. So, he had asked you a litany of questions, you know, fixing shutters, replacing shutters, replacing countertops. You said, "No, no, no." But one of the examples he gave you was replacing a wall between a kitchen and a dining room. And when you were speaking before, you said if you have an opportunity to add insulation and can do so, then that would trigger it? So, it's possible that replacing a wall between a kitchen and a dining room would trigger the stretch code, right?
No, it wouldn't trigger the stretch code on a large scale. If the wall you were replacing needed to have insulation, typically, interior walls do not require insulation.
Okay.
But typically, if you're running a pipe and a cavity in a wall, you would be expected to replace the insulation in an exterior wall. You wouldn't be required to meet the energy, the stretch energy code at that point.
And, so substantial renovation, would that be triggered, say, if there was an unfortunate circumstance where a whole neighborhood was flooded and people needed to rebuild their basements and half of the upstairs, the first floor? Would that trigger the stretch code?
On a case-by-case basis, when you're talking systems, in that respect, you would trigger the requirement to comply with the stretch energy code, yes.
Okay. And have you reviewed the proposal for this stretch code in Quincy? Have you reviewed that?
I reviewed it, and I've studied it, and I've analyzed it with respect to the enforcement and what's required of it. I have not looked at numbers, and I've heard all the numbers, but it doesn't really affect what my role is in this project.
Well, in your role, from what you've read, would you have the authority to grant a waiver for a federal disaster, a flood, or some other type of disaster situation that would strike perhaps a neighborhood?
I don't have the ability to give a waiver on anything on the building code or anything that's set by ordinance.
Okay. And obviously, the reason why I ask is because in March, a large portion, a portion of my ward was struck with a flood that decimated many homes, and many families did not receive federal assistance, but for maybe a $500 grant to replace washers and dryers and things like that, they were given very little money, in some circumstances, no money, from homeowner's insurance to cover the flood repair. And my concern is for those constituents that if they were, if we had this stretch code in place at the time that that happened, that they would incur additional expenses beyond what they would already face, just to get back to where they are, just to get back to where they started before some sort of natural disaster hits, some sort of federally declared disaster hits. And I guess that's my concern. So, there's no way in which you could provide a waiver for some situation like that?
Well, something like that is not something I'd take it upon myself. That would be up to this body to decide what would be appropriate. And of course, whatever this body decides is appropriate, that's what I would do. But it's not something I'd go off on my own.
And it's your understanding that there's no such provision in the language that you reviewed?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Duker.
You're welcome.
Jay, just another example of what Counselor Keenan and Counselor Palmucci mentioned. Jay, you know, I'm before the zoning board a lot, like most ward councils, and there was a matter before the zoning board a couple of weeks ago about an elderly woman who wanted to move into her child's home, adult child with her husband, is on Edinburgh Road, and the zoning board gave them approval to put, in addition, in a sense, an in-law apartment to accommodate this senior. Now, that is a completely different unit appended to an existing, single-family home that would trigger the stretch code.
If it was being built new, yes.
Right. And that's an additional cost to that family. It's a single-family home that affects a senior who I think is probably 85 years of age, and who knows? Maybe they decide to move out of this. The whole neighborhood was in favor of this project. They loved the family, loved the fact that the family was able to stay together and care for an elderly parent. And this is just another example of what we do in Quincy, which is more of a, where we don't attract, we don't entice new construction or development. Real estate taxes are high, or water bills are high, affordable housing. For a homeowner, for a builder, a contractor, someone like that, they must find it awfully difficult, especially in this environment, with high unemployment, lack of ability to raise funds, can't get a loan to deal with the existing ordinances. And based on what John Keenan said, if this doesn't affect a whole lot of folks, then what's the problem? If it doesn't affect anybody, then just pass the amendment. It's not a big deal. It doesn't affect anybody anyhow, and we all can feel good that we did what we could for the single-family homeowner and the two-family homeowner. But there are an awful lot of examples out there with adult children who are trying to take care of adult parents with issues, and they want to stay in the city. And we ought to be encouraging that, not disencouraging that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further questions of Mr. Duker, by any counselors? Actually, my question was going to be if we're at Counselor Palmucci's, and he's cooking bacon, and he sets the kitchen on fire, and we have to do a gut rehab. There's not a lot of cooking. That's next, right. On the amendment by Counselor Ramondi, seconded by Counselor Finn, to reduce the cost by 50% for building permit fees on applications for permits that would be impacted by the stretch code, and I'm not sure how we designate that, maybe that's a...
Just a point of clarification. Is this 50% reduction on the overall building permit or the incremental cost associated with the stretch code compliance? The way it's worded is that the person would get 50% off the entire cost. Just a clarification.
Okay. I think that's a fair question, was one I was going to try to ask myself. Counselor Ramondi?
Well, my point of order, once the motion is moved, there is no further discussion. I'm never in favor of moving matters, but you folks are. So, I think you have to close the debate, and let's get to the vote.
I just asked him for a clarification, exactly what the motion is, not a debate on the motion.
Unless the person withdraws the motion to move.
It's a, President, it's a point of order, it's not discussion on the motion.
Would you withdraw your motion to move the question for the purposes of getting this clarification?
Is this an actual vote on the amendment, or is this a vote to move the question?
No, it was actually a vote on the amendment.
It's a vote to move the question.
I asked to move the question, and I believe, Mr. President, you didn't acknowledge that. You just simply chose to move the matter, which, in my judgment, under Robert's rules, would allow Counsel Keenan to ask for clarification. Counselor Ramondi would be right if this was a vote to move the question. Debate is done, and then we vote on whether or not to move the question. But you didn't acknowledge...
No, I wasn't asking for a vote to move the question. I was asking for a vote on the amendment.
My point of order is, I don't think you could ignore a motion to move the question. It's undebatable, you need to take an immediate...
Withdrawn.
Fine.
On the, I'm just seeking a clarification, is it 50% off the entire cost of the building permit, or is it 50% off the incremental cost associated with the stretch code? It's a significant difference, and the way the motion is worded right now, we have no idea. Just a clarification.
Clarification? Counselor, would you like to clarify your motion?
I think it's very clear, Mr. President, that it's 50% of the building permit fee. I think it's very difficult to speculate what the costs are. Again, those councils who voted for the Honeywell contract, $30 million, we have promised that the city's going to, quote, "save money." I don't think we saved any money. So, a lot of these things are speculative. So, if you're looking at $100,000 renovation, which is a lot, and even a new home, because the land is already there, the cost of construction may be $150,000. So, at $10,000, the building permit fee would be $1,000. That's what we're talking about. So, someone who may have a potential impact of $3,000 or $5,000, we're asking the city to waive, we're asking the city to be a partner. If we're truly committed to doing this, we're asking the city to be a partner because we're adding to the cost of that construction, and the city is agreeing to be a partner in doing that, and to soften the economic impact on single and two-family homeowners. And it's not a lot of money. $100,000 for renovation is a lot. Now, $150,000 for a home, keep in mind, you don't get a building permit on the land, we're just talking construction, times $10,000, that's $1,500. That's $750. So, it's not a lot. You can go, I would like to know how many single-family homes have been built in Quincy in the past year? Probably not a whole lot. So, I think we need to protect those single-family, encourage them to do it, encourage the two-family homeowners to do it. There's an awful lot of property out there, we're all aware of it, that's prior to 1940, 1950 construction. There's a lot of properties in Quincy that are 50, 60, 70 years old and older. My sense is a good 70 or 80% of our properties are in excess of 50 or 60 years old. And we need to incentivize people to make those repairs, to do some new construction. So, I think this is a minimal grant that this city council can do, that Jay Duker can't do. We found that out in Counselor Palmucci's questioning. It's a way to get it done for those folks who either voluntarily want to do some repair or involuntarily because the city has not solved a drainage problem... or involuntarily, because the city has not solved a drainage problem or a flood problem, and they're impacted not only because of the devastation of that, but then they hit with the $3,000 or $5,000 extra cost because of a new building code. So I think it's just a way to soften the blow, and I'm going to move the question on the amendment. I think we debated it enough.
So the answer is the whole...
I think I had my hand up. And the last time somebody moved the question, you acknowledged that somebody had their hand up.
Council Gatto had his hand up, and I think he was still asking for further clarification. Was your question answered, Counsel?
Just so that we're clear, it's 50% of the total cost of the building permit, not the additional cost associated with the Stretch Energy Code, but it's 50% of the cost of the entire building permit.
That's correct.
Citywide. Above and beyond anything related to the stretch code, we're giving additional relief unrelated to the stretch code. Okay.
And just a clarification, say, I didn't hear, maybe I missed it, but I didn't hear that this was limited to single-family homes. I mean, is it two families? Is it three families? Is it apartment buildings? Is it all commercial development in the city of Quincy? I didn't hear it. And then if it is narrowly defined, I guess it'd be a question for the city solicitor, whether or not we can make that distinction to waive for a certain segment, or does it have to apply to the whole code? So regardless, I'm not going to support the amendment. So I'm happy to move the question.
I think the clerk is happy to have the question moved.
On Council Ramondi's amendment, a yes vote approves amendment, a no vote disapproves.
He's made a motion, Council Ramondi's made a motion to move the question. Need a vote procedurally.
To move the question. Council Finn?
Yes.
Council Gatto?
Yes.
Council Keenan?
Yes.
Council Forrest?
Yes.
Council McFaulin?
Yes.
Council McNamee?
Yes.
Council Palmucci?
No.
Council Ramondi?
Yes.
Eight to one to move the question. On the amendment?
On the amendment.
A yes approves, a no disapproves. Council Finn?
No.
Council Gatto?
No.
Council Keenan?
No.
Council Forrest?
Yes.
Council McFaulin?
No.
Council McNamee?
No.
Council Palmucci?
Yes.
Council Ramondi?
Yes.
President Coughlin?
No.
Seven to two. Amendment fails. Move the question on Council Order 201015 for the stretch code, so-called stretch code. Council Finn?
Yes.
Council Gatto?
Yes.
Council Keenan?
Yes.
Council Forrest?
Yes.
Council McFaulin?
Yes.
Council McNamee?
No.
Council Palmucci?
No.
Council Ramondi?
Yes.
Six to three.
Six haven't voted in the affirmative.
The motion is adopted.
Stretch code is adopted.
I believe the very first motion was to move the question, the whole question. If Council Gatto is correct, we're going to go back to the total question? How do you, what do you understand of this?
Removing the question from the adoption.
So we're going to move, make, we're going to vote on the entire passage, because we moved the question. Council Finn?
Yes.
Council Gatto?
Yes.
Council Keenan?
Yes.
Council Forrest?
Yes.
Council McFaulin?
No.
Council Palmucci?
No.
Council Ramondi?
No.
President Coughlin?
Yes.
Six to three, the order is...
The order is adopted.
You ready?
Next matter.
Next matter, Mr. President. Number four, pending in ordinance committee, Order 2010192, rezone land on assesses Plan 3019, Plot 9, to open space. Land on Zero Circuit Road contains 99,550-plus square feet. The land off Wyden Road is rezoned, is Zoned Residence A. The remaining portion is Zoned PUD. This public hearing was held this evening. It's properly advertised. Positive recommendation received from the planning board pending in ordinance committee.
Council Gatto?
Thank you, Mr. President. Everything the clerk said is accurate. I just wanted to check with the city solicitor. I just asked him, as we have in prior ordinance committee meetings, as well as other opportunities, just to make sure that we're in a position with the sale of the property, that there's an agreement. So I want the solicitor, if I could solicit, Timmons?
And we do have to move it out of committee for purposes of discussion.
Oh, I asked unanimous consent to bring it before us.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
So through you.
Mr. Timmons?
Mr. President, to Mr. Timmons. Jim, I'm pretty sure this is the issue that's been before us several times, and there was a series of negotiations and ambiguity. Are we finally at a place that you can update us, that you have absolute confidence the council can take action, that there's an agreement and so forth? Can you walk us through that?
Sure. When we last spoke about it, I had ordered a title exam, and that title exam was completed and submitted, and we reviewed it. And we've shared that title exam with the attorney for the seller. We've agreed with that attorney that we have the land properly defined, and we have any ownership interest and any other interest in the land properly identified as well. There are no interests that need to be discharged. But one of the things that came up was there's an estate interest in the land. This is the old Bates property, and what happened was that over the course of time, Mr. Bates used to convey parts of it into a trust, he subdivided parts of it. So there was a little confusion about the land that the city's actually getting, but we have that all cleared up. There was a deed drawn up that the parties agree, represents the parcel involved, and now the seller's attorney's getting that deed signed by the appropriate parties. It includes an estate interest, and that's the reason for the bit of a delay. But everything's all set.
So there was, was there money from the CPA that was to fund this transaction? Is that...
Yes.
And so this, by taking the action now to rezonate, you're confident that the sale will, the transaction will happen, everything will close, we can rezonate, we're not essentially, this isn't a taking, this is an agreement?
That's correct, yeah.
A mutual agreement by both parties based on agreed amount of the sale?
Correct. And as kind of a default provision, it's landlocked property as it is, so there's an issue about development capability for that property.
Is there, was there a 21E done? Is there any contamination on the property that the city might assume liability for?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know that that's ever come up at all, but...
You know what happens when a city assumes liability for contamination?
Yes, the property owner would, for any land, yeah. I understand that.
Past president.
But there's a...
Are you confident?
An attorney has handled it for the CPA, and I really don't know about that.
Say that again?
There is an attorney who handled it for the CPA, and I'm just not certain, I should say CPC, because of the committee, but I'm not certain about that detail. I do know that I addressed the title issues, and that we're happy with that.
Is there, I guess through you, Mr. President, or the clerk, there's a timeline to vote on this, is there not?
There is, Counsel.
Which is...
Through you, Mr. President, there is.
And that timeline means it needs to be acted upon now, or it will have to lapse and readvertise, or...
Let me read it to you.
I'll tell you, my interest, Mr. President, is simply to make sure that there's not a shred of potential, that there's any contamination on the property, and that the city's going to be liable for the investigation or cleanup of that contamination. I think it's important that we do our due diligence on that before we buy any property.
Through you, Mr. President, Council Gatto, the public hearing was held tonight. That public hearing was properly called within the 65 days of when it was introduced in June. Once the public hearing is held, the city council has 90 days to act, and a two-thirds vote is required on all rezoning matters.
So we have until when?
We have exactly 90 days from today, but let me give it...
Oh, 90 days from the day of the public hearing. Understood. So it's not my intent or desire to delay it. I just want to make, you know, if this listener were absolutely certain that we wouldn't, that there are no contamination issues, that there's been research on it that suggests that there's no 21E liability associated, no underground storage tanks historically on the property, none of those issues, and I wouldn't be troubled with making a move at this point, but...
Okay.
And... So what's your thinking, Mr. Solicitor, on those issues? Do we wait and...
Ask the attorney what sort of due diligence had been...
So do you think you're suggesting that we wait until the first meeting in September, and you'll have answers on that, or...
That, you know, that's a great, I certainly can have an answer by that point. It's up to the body whether you wait on the vote or not. I know that by zoning it open space, you know, the city's not going to take on any 21E liability. I think what we could do is if you wanted to act exclusive of that issue, you certainly could, you could rezonate. And then I'll just make certain with the council involved that there has been appropriate due diligence on that. I suspect it has, and I'm just not aware of it.
And so you're suggesting that the closing hasn't happened at this point, right? The transaction?
That's correct.
Okay. So you still have time. We can vote on this tonight, we can rezonate, and there's no issues with respect to the 21E, and that you still have the window of time, one way or the other, if we vote on it now or not?
That's correct. I'll make the inquiry tomorrow.
And with that, Mr. President, I have no objections on taking action.
Council Gatto, second.
Council Keenan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you and Mr. Timmons, what is the purchase price of the property?
I believe it's $50,000.
And that was appropriated through the community preservation fund back in June?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The money's all appropriated. Everything's drawn up. It's just a case, the only thing I'm aware of, but I'm going to check on the 21E, is getting a particular interest signed off.
Council Ramondi?
Yeah. Approval of the rezoning measure 2010, 192, to rezonate the property to open space. This is a matter, Mr. President, as indicated during the public hearing on a number of occasions, that this community has worked very hard on. In my conversations with Kristin Powes, they have done their due diligence with respect to any issues of contamination or anything else on the site. But again, this is not an acquisition order. I think we've already done that. We've already approved the 50 and all of that. So this is just a rezonate. It's landlocked property, really can't be used for anything else. It was, it was appropriate many, many months ago when it was offered. So I would ask my colleagues to support the rezoning. It's a critical need of the revitalization of Faxon Park and the whole plan. So I would ask my colleagues to support the initiative to rezonate open space. Thank you.
Council Ramondi moves approval of the rezoning of the land on Zero Zero Circuit Road, land containing 99,550 square feet, land off of Wyden Road, to be rezoned from Residence A to open space, seconded by, actually, Council Forrest had already seconded it. So we're set there. On the motion, Council Keenan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll support the motion, but I just want to make a qualifying statement. I commend Council Ramondi for all his work in getting this to the point where it will be added to our open space. But I think we should just want to make sure, and I want to put on the record, that we don't establish this as a precedent. This is a unique situation where the funding is available, where the agreement is in place, where basically everything is in order but for a date to finalize things. I think it's very dangerous for us in general to rezonate privately-owned land open space. But I think this is somewhat distinct because of the circumstances here. So I want to commend Council Ramondi for the work, and just put that out there, so we don't, or nobody interprets this as a precedent for the rezoning to open space of privately-owned land. Thank you.
Good point. Motion having been made and seconded, Mr. Clerk?
Council Finn?
Yes.
Council Gatto?
Yes.
Council Keenan?
Yes.
Council Forrest?
Yes.
Council McFaulin?
Yes.
Council McNamee?
Yes.
Council Palmucci?
Yes.
Council Ramondi?
Yes.
Council Coughlin?
Yes.
Eight to zero, Mr. President. One present.
Eight having voted in the affirmative. Matter is approved.
Yep.
Congratulations, Counselor. Next item on the agenda...
Next item on the agenda is number five, Mr. President. Council Order 2010168, amend Title II, Chapter 2.72, Fire Department. Change charge user fees for deployment of public safety services rendered by the city of Quincy. It's a joint filed, it's pending in ordinance and public safety committee.
Do I have a motion to remove this from committee for the purposes of discussion? Moved by Council Palmucci. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. Memphis City Council, this is an ordinance that was discussed by this party in June, and the purpose of it is to attempt to recover costs for incidents that the Quincy Fire Department responds to that involve motor vehicle incidents, and the intent is to recover those costs incurred by this department, and to do it in a manner that does not, does not allow cost recovery directly from individuals, but that the insurance companies would be billed directly.
Make questions of the chief. Chief, what we're being asked to vote upon tonight is substantially different than from what we first discussed?
Yes, Mr. President. It has been narrowed to specific motor vehicle accidents, motor vehicle fires, rescue calls, and hazardous materials incidents.
I actually just got a copy of the advertisement, because I don't have a copy.
Nothing in the packet.
Nothing in the packet?
I do have it.
Okay. So...
Just copy that and give them all on those.
Can I get a copy of that? So there were substantial concerns that were discussed at that meeting in June, and those have been addressed by a more focused approach...
That's correct.
...of this revision. Okay.
It's worked on by members of the mayor's office, and reviewed, I believe, by Council Palmucci.
Going to ask Counsel if you want to...
Just very briefly, this was the measure that we discussed prior to our summer recess, in which I expressed serious concerns about a fictitional bacon fire, and someone would therefore be charged if they called 911 and had fire services respond, or fire personnel respond and provide services. The ordinance has been tightened up. I don't believe it is a substantial change in the intent or the letter of the ordinance, but by simply reworking some of the provisions and tightening it up, I think we've closed what was a significant loophole where personally I feared that individuals who might be on a fixed income or what have you would think twice before calling 911. I'm resolved to believe that that situation would no longer occur. I believe that limiting this to motor vehicle accidents specifically into the type of services that would be rendered in a motor vehicle accident, such as hazardous materials cleanup, is a reasonable approach to these things, and a cost recovery program makes a lot of sense to do that, given our limited resources in the city. And I believe that in the budget that we all voted for, there was a, not a provision, but in the budget that we voted for, this was the amount of money that would be raised from the passage of a cost recovery program was factored into the staffing levels of the Fire Department. And I personally am going to support this, because I think it's the right thing to do, and I think, you know, I think it's reasonable to charge a recovery fee for certain situations that are contemplated by this measure. But also, I think we are, we are in trouble if we don't. I think that would be a significant hit to the fire budget... I think that would be a significant hit to the fire budget, fire department budget, which has already, you know, faced significant challenges in not only this year but in years past. So I would urge my colleagues to support this measure.
Thank you, Counselor. It's my recollection that we can only move prospectively in terms of the cost recovery. I think the question had been asked by Counselor Ramadi at that last meeting, whether we could go back to, for example, the January of this year or some predetermined date that was prior to passage. And I don't believe we can do that. It can only take effect once we pass it. So in terms of fiscal constraints that your department is facing, contemplating having this in place, time is of the essence. Is it fair to say...
Yes, Mr. President. It would be. We can only move forward with this program, with this ordinance in place.
Counselor Finn?
Keenan, I'm sorry I was not present for the debate last time. And generally, I support the intent of this, but I guess there's a question around the construction of it that still leaves me a little bit confused. And I'm just wondering if it can be tightened up in some way. And again, it says that it's being established, "due to the increased cost of responding to emergencies caused by the negligent, reckless, or malicious actions of owners or operators of motor vehicles." But then when we drop down to the scope, it says, "Any owner or operator of a motor vehicle to which the fire department provides fire operation services," and it has in parentheses "the responsible party," "shall pay the cost of such service." So there seems to be a very broad construction here in terms of essentially anybody to whom responds is still ultimately liable, though it does say that it will not allow the cost recovery directly from individuals later on. But the question I have, by way of example, is there some connection? Is this really meant to refer to the negligent, reckless, or malicious actions of owners? So for example, if I, my car engine, I pull off to the side of the road and it starts on fire, and the fire department is called, and the fire department comes, is that something that you're going to file a claim with my insurance company for coming out and simply putting out that fire?
It does state motor vehicle fires.
So how is that negligent, reckless, or malicious, and other than it may simply just be, it happens?
Well, there is a provision in the insurance policies that we would look to collect on. That was information that I...
But for every claim, as a taxpayer, as a citizen, or whatever, but if I have insurance, and again, I believe in the case where people are negligent, reckless, or malicious, those rates should go up. But if you come out and make a call on that and now are charging my, that's going to affect me, even though I can't be liable individually to you for that cost. My insurance rates, in all likelihood, will go up as a result of something that may not be necessarily negligent, reckless, or malicious. I guess this is the part of it that I find confusing, and if I thought it was tightened to really respond to why you're establishing it, as opposed to kind of giving just this universal thing that every time you guys respond to this call, you're going to be hitting the insurance company of the vehicle owner involved, the way it reads to me. I don't know if, I'll yield to Counselor Palmucci if he wants to address it specifically.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes. Through you, Mr. President. One of the, after the last meeting, I worked with the mayor's office to help revise this, to address some of the concerns that I had expressed previously. And one of the, I wouldn't say stumbling points, but one of the difficulties that we had in drafting this and revising it was the words that you referred to in the establishment clause of the negligent, reckless, and malicious actions. One of the things we would try, we tried to be cautious about was specifically referencing negligence in the individual who would be liable for the cost recovery. Because I think that that would give, that would make it nearly impossible to collect any recovery fee because no one is going to admit negligence. And the ultimate determination as to whether someone was negligent or not wouldn't be concluded until, wouldn't be determined until perhaps after a court proceeding, or perhaps never. If two vehicles get into an accident and both of them are equally at fault, neither reaching the standard of negligence or malicious or reckless action, then you wouldn't be able to recover against either. And I think that was one of the concerns. Your concern, specifically your example about a car fire, is that what it was? If you're driving down the street, your engine catches fire?
Your engine's suddenly on fire from some malfunction.
Well, I personally, in my other professional life, I did some insurance, I handled insurance defense cases for insurance companies. And I can tell you that without some sort of incident, your, a claim, you would not get a surcharge based on that. You would not get, your insurance company would just deny that. They would deny to pay that claim. And under the, under what would happen if you contemplate how this is written, if your insurance company would then deny that claim, there'd be no individual liability. Therefore, you would have no, you would not have to pay for that vehicle fire. I don't believe that in the instance of a vehicle fire that anyone would, any insurance company, anyone, any individual would be negatively affected by this cost recovery program. I don't believe that the insurance company rates would then reflect a claim put in by the city. I think it would be summarily denied. But that's my opinion.
Well, and again, I appreciate that opinion because I'm not sure how this interacts, particularly with insurance. So essentially, what you're saying is there's nothing in the way this is constructed presently that would, in a sense, by the fact that the fire department's going to be making claims against a citizen's insurance, that's going to necessarily, unless it's been established that there was some sort of negligence, recklessness, or the like, to increase the rates of their insurance in any way, shape, or form.
The, your insurance rates are affected by your STEPs, the S-T-E-P, and that's affected by how many at-fault accidents do you get in. I believe there is some determination as to the number of step increases, and I'm treading into the murky area of the extent of my knowledge here, so that's a caveat. But the step increases are triggered by claims put in against your, to your policy for, say, a negligent accident. If, you know, I just rear-end you at a stop sign, I'm going to get surcharged due to the damage that the insurance company's going to have to pay to your vehicle. My insurance company's going to have to pay for the repair of your vehicle. That's going to, that's going to cause a step increase and a rate increase, and subsequently a rate increase in my insurance premiums. I don't believe that this will make those premiums go up anymore. You know, I don't believe that a cost recovery program would have an effect on your insurance premiums because it wouldn't have an effect on your step increases. That's my thought. But again, with the caveat that we're in the gray area to my legal knowledge.
So essentially, this means that for any time that they're called, except in those cases where, the example I give, for example, then would they, would the fire department as well be denied any collection off of that for a fire, an engine fire off? They would not be able to claim anything either?
Unless there was some sort of, unless there was some sort of negligence. You know, if I rear-ended you in your car caught on fire, then I believe that's when payment would be triggered.
So essentially, in terms of the responsible party, as it's outlined within the construction of this ordinance and the reason behind the establishment, it'll basically achieve that without affecting ordinary things that happen or could happen?
That was the intent.
Okay. Great. That's helpful. Thank you.
Counselor Keenan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Going through Counsel Finn's point, I think he raises a good issue as to the lack of a nexus, so to speak, between the established section 2.7, 4.010, and the scope. But I think it could be remedied. I think the point was that as justification for the ordinance, it says that there's an increased cost responding to emergencies caused by the negligent, reckless, or malicious actions of owners or, excuse me, or operators of motor vehicles. I think if you change the scope language to read that whenever the fire department provides fire operation services arising out of motor vehicle crash, motor vehicle fire, rescue call, or hazardous material incident arising out of the negligent, reckless, or malicious actions of owners or operators, "The fire chief or designee shall send an invoice to the owner, occupant, or other responsible party for the cost incurred in performing fire operation services." What that does is it ties in the idea that it involves negligent, cases of negligence and so forth, and it would, I think, occur in a similar fashion to if there is a motor vehicle accident that ends up doing property damage to my house, for instance, two motor vehicles or a single motor vehicle due to negligent operation, alleged negligent operation, ends up on my front lawn and takes out my front porch. There's not an immediate determination that there's any negligence involved. I, as a homeowner, would notify my insurance company, and they would put in a claim. And then the insurance companies, by way of arbitration or through the process that they use to pay claims, would resolve that. So in this instance, I think it would be similar. The city would be in the place of the homeowner, basically. If there's an incident to which the city responds and has to provide services, the city sends a bill to the parties involved in the motor vehicle accidents, and they then forward those claims on to their insurance company for payment or resolution of some sort. It won't be immediate, but it will be, go through the typical insurance process. Again, similar as if somebody operating a motor vehicle negligently did damage to my home. I would submit the bill to my insurance company, which would then pass it on to the insurance company of the motor vehicle, and they would go through the interagency or the intercompany resolution process. So I think if we, as Counsel Finn points out, make the nexus between what is the basis or the underlying justification for this ordinance, tie that into the scope, we are then in a position where we can make claim in matters of negligence and so forth to the insurance companies. They will address the issue. They will deny a claim or grant a claim. If they deny it, they may have to do so on the basis they don't find their driver negligent, which would mean that we wouldn't be able to collect because it was not a negligent situation, or we'd collect against the party that is found to be negligent. So I think providing that nexus will allow us to partake of the insurance process. And I would suggest that in the form of a motion, Mr. President, or an amendment, rather, a motion to amend the order. And it would change 2.74.030 scope to read, "Whenever the fire department provides fire operation services arising out of a motor vehicle crash, motor vehicle fire, rescue call, or hazardous material incident arising out of the negligent, reckless, or malicious actions of owners or operators of motor vehicles, then the fire chief or designee shall send an invoice to the owner, occupant, or other responsible party for the cost incurred in performing fire operation services. The cost of such fire operation services shall be charged and payable according to the schedule set forth in Appendix A to the Code of Ordinances." That would put us into the insurance process. Not every claim is going to be paid, but it puts us in the process. Some will be paid quickly, some may not be paid for quite some time, and others may be outright denied.
Counselor Keenan makes an amendment to 2.74.030 scope, seconded by Counselor Finn on the motion. Counselor Palmucci?
I do have a concern about that, and I may ultimately support it because it does, I see Counselor Finn and Counselor Keenan's point about tying it in. The reason why that wasn't included in the language was the thought that both insurance, say you have a car that, two cars that collide in an intersection. The thought is that if you then respond, provide hazmat services, the oil, the gas tank is punctured, there's gasoline all over the street, fire department has to come, put down sand, take other necessary actions, that you then bill for the services to recover the cost of that, of that service that's been provided. You would assess the cost to who? Because at that point, you're leaving it to who's going to determine who the negligent party is between two vehicles that collide in an intersection. And that's why it was any owner or operator of a motor vehicle to which the fire department provided services. So that Car A and Car B that collide in an intersection, Car A's gasoline tank is punctured. Car B may be at fault, Car A may be at fault, but it doesn't matter. Car A received the services, so Car A's insurance company would be billed. Car A's insurance company would then be responsible for paying, for recouping the cost, to paying the city. Then it would be between Car A and Car B to figure out who is liable. So it would take the city out of the determination, or the contractor that the city hires, to take them out of the determination of which party was negligent, reckless, malicious, or responsible. It would simply bill the individual who received the services because that's what we could prove, rather than the negligence. So that's the concern as to why that, the language was taken out, or why the language has been proposed and amendment wasn't included previously. I don't know that that's fatal, but that's the consideration, that's the thought that was behind it.
Counselor Keenan?
That's a point well taken. The language, the thought behind the language that's on the amendment is to give the basis for the city to bill somebody. And then, I think you're right, it has to be then left up between the parties to determine who. So I think if you take out the scope section, because the way it's written now says, "The fire chief or his designee shall send an invoice to the owner, occupant, or other responsible party." That word "responsible" requires a determination by the city as to who is liable or negligent. So if you take that out, you're left with a situation then, a language that says, "Whenever there's negligence involved," regardless of who's responsible for it, it's clear there's an accent of some sort, there's negligence, there's reckless or malicious conduct involved, that remove the word "responsible," then we submit a bill to the party or parties involved. They pass them on to their insurance company, and it goes to the insurance process. So I think removing that word "responsible" is consistent with the point that Counsel Palmucci raises, which is a good point. And then putting in the negligence language ties the justification for the ordinance to situations when we can bill. Take out the word "responsible," and it leaves that we can bill to both parties, and their insurance companies then resolve it. And we're not put in a situation of making determinations to liability. So I'd move also that the word "responsible" be stricken.
Counselor Keenan moves that the word "responsible" be stricken and offers up the language as previously cited.
Did I draft this? I think this has my name on it. Can I accept that as a friendly amendment so we don't have to vote on it, right?
Sure.
And I'll just say, in doing so, that if that allays some of the concerns that a couple of the councils have expressed, I'd certainly find it. I trust that the fire chief would let us know if that additional language becomes a problem in actually executing the, you know, the thought behind this and recovering some of the fees, so that we could, you'd let us know so that we could change whatever we need to change to make it more feasible in the collection of this cost recovery program.
Counselor Ramadi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through the chief. Chief, the bottom line is this is only related to motor vehicle accidents. Correct? That's correct. And no individual will be asked to pay anything beyond what his or her insurance provides. And if they don't have insurance, then the city does not recover from the individual? That's correct, Counselor. The only question I have, Chief, and again, if Counselor Palmucci can perhaps clarify as well. Under definitions, "fire operation service," because it gets to the point that I raised at the last meeting, relate to motor vehicle crashes, motor vehicle fines, but then it gets rescue calls and hazardous material incidents. Three out of four of those are related to motor vehicles. A rescue call could be anyone. Is it the understanding that the rescue calls are just related to motor vehicle crashes and not to someone who calls 911? And if it's, why do you need that language? Because you already have motor vehicle crashes, motor vehicle fires, and hazardous materials. So if, if the council, I mean, could we strike rescue calls? I would move, Mr. President, that we strike rescue calls under 2.74.020 definitions. And so it would read, "Fire operation services served by the fire department, whether it be to motor vehicle crashes, common motor vehicle fires, and hazardous material incidents."
Counselor Ramadi moves we strike the words "rescue calls" under 2.74.020 definitions, seconded by Counselor Palmucci. All in favor, say aye. Not opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, I want to thank the chief for his patience as we work through this, and thank Counselor Palmucci for the awful work on this. and thank Counsel Palmucci for the awful lot of work on this. I support the initiative, I think it's things that we need to do more of, and hopefully recoup some funding that previously we were perhaps entitled to, but we didn't get. And I think it'll enable our fire department to be better funded. I don't know, Chief, I know that there's an offset within the budget. When this money goes in, are you guaranteed that this money is going to be earmarked to the department? How does that work out?
That's a good question, Counsel. This is all relatively new to me. I have been working with City Hall and in discussions through the budget process with Nick Pulio. They set up a recovery line within my budget that as this money becomes available, it will be deposited into that line.
Through you, Mr. President, to the auditor. Madam Auditor, how does this physically work? Funds come into the city, usually this will go into a general fund, there is no, is there a separate ordinance, state enabling law? I mean, how does, how does the fire department get guaranteed that whatever money is recouped from this initiative goes directly to the fire department? Or does it require a city council vote on occasion to transfer from one account to another?
I believe that the offset was $250,000, so I would assume that it would go into a revenue account in the general fund, and then...
So we would need to appropriate out of that fund?
Yes. That would be my understanding of it.
And if the mayor decided not to do it, then the fire department would be underfunded by...
Well, it was voted on in the budget that you were going to accept that $250,000 offset.
Right, right. But the mayor, I'm not talking this mayor, but a mayor would still have to bring it in, right? Or...
I would have to check, but I think it was included as a revenue and not designated for the fire department, meaning that it comes in, and they're anticipating so much of it, that they're basing the fire department budget and other, on it, anticipating this revenue. So all, the city's revenues are added together, including this, and it supports all the budget.
Because the fire department budget was reduced by this amount of money?
Yes, it was.
That was, that was, that's my memory.
We'd have to check the pages.
That's my memory. That the fire department expense budget was reduced by a sum, Chief, correct?
Yes, it was.
So I just want to know, because they've been hit about as hard as anybody could get hit. And if times get more difficult in the balance of this year, come February, March, April, May of 2011, what guarantees do we have that those funds, other than the fact that the mayor's, you know, is man of his word, man of integrity, indicates that he's going to do it? But what guarantee do we have as councils before we vote on this, that the funds are actually going to be dedicated to the fire department? Kind of begs the question, if there's more money that comes in, let's, was it $250,000, Chief?
That's correct, Counsel.
What if there's $300,000? Does all that money go to the fire department? Does $50,000 go into the general fund to be appropriated? Does 250, does that guarantee? I mean, what are the mechanics? There is no state enabling act, we don't have revolving fund, we haven't voted on that, there's no special legislation here. So our money that comes in, goes into the general fund, needs to be re-appropriated I remember, Mr. President, that the reason why this was such an important initiative by the chief is because he knew that come July 4th, he was in trouble, he had a quarter of a million dollars less than what he needed. And without this initiative, he's dead in the water. So that's why I appreciate the fact that Counsel Palmucci worked with him to move it forward, and we've had this meeting. But it still kind of begs the question, how do we know that the money's going to be appropriated back in? And when does that happen? Does it happen in May of 2011? Will it happen periodically, like what we do to tourism, park and recreation, those automatic kind of transfers? Or if we know, if not, maybe at the next meeting, we could get a clarification as to what exactly is going to happen? But first of all, is it true, Madam Auditor, that the expense budget by the fire department was reduced by the anticipated revenue?
Yes, it was. The personal service, personal services was reduced by $250,000.
So if this, if this initiative does not work, or if there's no appropriation into the department?
We'll have a shortfall.
Then we'll have a shortfall of a quarter of a million dollars.
I'm going to assume that it will work in the same way the offsets made in the traffic department with the parking receipts. At the end of the fiscal year, we usually, you know, do a transfer, and that's...
So you would do one, because in the parking receipts, it comes in periodically?
Yes, it does. But then at the, at the end of the fiscal year, we transfer money by council approval into the traffic department budget.
So you anticipate one appropriation, either transfer or appropriation out of the general fund at the year end of next year?
I would assume so, yes. But I will check with the finance director on that.
And if it's, if this amount is underfunded, if the initiative brings in $175,000, through Mr. President, to the, Mr. Fatsis? What do we do at that point, Mr. Fatsis? If, through the best efforts of the chief, $175,000 comes in, he's $75,000 short of where everybody believes he needs to be? What happens at that point?
The, the same thing that would happen in a, in a situation where any other revenue was to suffer a shortfall. We budget based on assumptions, revenue assumptions. We would have to come up with a, you know, additional funding, or we would have to cut the budget. It's, any other revenue assumption that we make, this is subject to the same limitations of any other revenue assumption that we make.
And conversely, on the positive side, if $300,000 is taken in, is there any sense that the mayor would...
Well, as a revenue, that, the, again, if we were to have a spike in excise tax, you know, or a spike in any other revenue, I would imagine that it would fall to the general fund, but I'll get a clarification from the Department of Municipal Finance as part of our conversation here tonight.
Mr. President, I know that you feel the same way I do, that this department has been devastated over the past couple of fiscal cycles, more so than any other department. This is a serious initiative that's going to require an awful lot of work by this chief and his administration. I would like to incentivize them to do what they need to do. I think the best way to do that is to provide some positive reinforcement at the end, so that perhaps every penny that they take in would be, go to enhance the Quincy Fire Department. And with that in mind, then they will make absolutely sure that every accident gets billed, and every possible billing that takes place, that can take place, does in fact take place. Not that it would, because he's the ultimate professional, but this is an unusual initiative that's being undertaken by this department, relatively new to the city, something that I don't think we've seen before in this vein. And if they take it upon themselves, and if they're enhancing the obligations and the responsibilities, that's what, that's what this department has to do. This gentleman's taking some initiative, and I think the department, if all goes well, I would like to see this department be able to rebuild itself so that it can return to where it was with rescue one and the other services that are so desperately needed of being provided to our residents without the impact on the taxpayers. Those are my thoughts. How we get there, I'll leave that up to others to figure out. But that's what I'd like to see happen.
I have a question. Is there, is there anything that would be violative of our authority if we were to include in the establishment clause of this ordinance that all revenues generated?
I think you'd have to establish a revolving fund, and it would have to, I don't think you could do it by this document. And the other point, Mr. President, if this is prospective, I think if there are any changes that would trigger another advertising, I think it's incumbent upon us to pass this tonight and then do those changes later. So at the very least, that would be a substantive amendment, in my judgment. And I don't think we can do that by a city ordinance. I think it would require a homer petition, a special legislation to establish a revolving account.
Yes.
But that's something that the administration, the auditor, and the president maybe could work on. And that would really provide a serious incentive for the department to respond and do their professional service, and then bill the offending party. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Finn?
One of the questions, I think Counsel Ramadi's kind of ruminations here about where this goes, it does beg another question, which is, which I haven't heard too much about, but is the logistics of the actual billing. Where's that going to take place? Is that going to take place through municipal finance, or is that taking place through your department?
It will largely take place through my department, but using an outside vendor.
Oh, that's right, that's great. It's the outside vendor. And again, what's the cost associated with the outside vendor, again?
I've interviewed and looked at a couple of different vendors, and RFP went out, a vendor was selected, and that vendor's cost is 20%.
20% of whatever's collected?
Of money collected.
Okay, great. All right. And so again, most of that, so again, and again, not to get on a soapbox, but obviously, one of the great things I'm concerned about are the numbers coming out of fire suppression. Seems that over the last few years, that number keeps going down, 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 of the firefighters that are actually involved. So this is work I trust, and I know the representative of firefighters is here, but I trust, this is work that's already going on. So this is not reflecting additional work that's being added at this point, or any way that's going to interfere with the provision of service at this point.
No, the vendor that we've selected has an exclusive agreement with the software that we currently use, so that most of the information is transferred electronically.
But it's no additional work as well, in terms of, in other words, these responses are responses that the Quincy Fire Department's already making. So it's not talking about adding any additional service, so we're not really talking about stretching an already significantly decreased suppression force any further at this point.
I'm sure there'll be some bugs that have to be worked out on my level. But for the individual firefighters and company officers, it should be quite seamless.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel LaForest, and then Counsel Ramadi.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President, to the chief. Chief, as we've gotten into our fiscal '11 budget, with the Germantown Station being browned out more, you know, on more occasions than I had anticipated, are we going to be looking at, if revenues are coming into this budget, of staff, being able to staff, further staff that ingrate? I mean, do we think that, you know, manpower-wise, we're looking, getting back on track down there? Or...
I'm not sure I have the question just right. I'm having a little bit of difficulty hearing you, I'm sorry.
Right. So I'm concerned about the Germantown Station, your departments have done a great job to me communicating when they have needed to brown out the station. But I'm just curious as to, you know, where these numbers are with this $250,000 salary wise from the expense, that this is, you know, going to help the department, being able to further staff that station?
Unfortunately, it really is not new revenue.
Okay.
So...
It's making up for lost.
It's making up for that. We had planned on this in the budget process, so...
We had plugged this into this year's budget?
Yes.
Okay. Let's hope the projections are conservative then. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other questions of the chief? Counsel Ramadi?
Chief, I know that sometime back you gave us an Appendix A. Do you have a copy of that with you?
Yes, I do.
Do you have, is that part of the original proposal?
What is it?
Mr. Clark? I just want to make sure we vote on the whole, because the ordinance refers to Appendix A, I just want to make sure we have...
I have it.
Do you have an Appendix A?
I do.
Okay. Do you have an extra copy, Chief?
Do I have a motion on the floor to adopt?
Counsel Palmucci.
Counsel Palmucci? Adopt the matter as amended, seconded by Counsel Ramadi? On the motion, Mr. Clark?
Counsel out of 2010168 as amended, Fire Department, Chapter 2.72. Counsel Finn, Counsel Gattro, Counsel Keenan, Counsel LaForest, Counsel McFaulen, Counsel McNamee, Counsel Palmucci, Counsel Ramadi, Counsel Koffler, Mr. President. Nine members, Mr. President.
Nine members having voted in the affirmative that matter passes. Next item on the agenda.
Next item is, was also introduced on June 7th and advertised. It says, "Be it a day in the Quincy City Council that the Quincy Municipal Court is hereby amended as follows. Entitled to Administration of Personnel, Chapter 2.72, Fire Department is amended by adding 2.72130, False Alarm and Investigations, the following, Section 2.72.230, False Alarm and Investigations. To regulate the use of the Fire Department emergency resources, the following provides a system of fees to recover costs and reduce and control fire alarms caused by mechanical failures, malfunctioning, improper installation, or negligent of the user, or malicious false alarms, which may occur in any fiscal year, July 1st through June 30th. The property owner will be billed as follows: First offense, no charge; second offense, no charge; third offense, $100; fourth offense and each subsequent offense, $200." This also came in on June 7th. There was minimal discussion on this at Chairman Palmucci's suggestion, I advertised this also, I believe it's attached to the first one, although it's a separate order.
Anything to add to that?
I don't have anything to add.
Any questions of the chief on this? Counsel Gattro?
These are, false alarms are these burglar alarms or fire alarms?
This says, "System of user fees to control false alarms caused by mechanical failure, malfunction, improper installation, or negligent of the user, or malicious false alarms."
So it's not, this is not a burglar alarm at all?
This is not burglar alarms, this is fire alarms. We do have an ordinance on burglar alarms, and we do charge people for multiple burglar alarms. Thank you. Turn to the police department.
Any further questions?
I'm ready.
Counsel Palmucci?
I move this matter from committee to be placed before the council for consideration.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We have a motion on the floor to adopt. Counsel Keenan moves adoption, seconded by Counsel Palmucci. Mr. Clark?
Counsel Finn, Counsel Gattro, Counsel Keenan, Counsel LaForest, Counsel McFaulen, Counsel McNamee, Counsel Palmucci, Counsel Ramadi, President Koffler.
Yes.
Nine to zero, Mr. President.
Nine members having voted in the affirmative, that matter is adopted. The next item on the agenda, Mr. Clark, I've asked, I will ask for the permission of my colleagues to move, take a matter out of order, Number 8, destructive trimming of trees. We do have a representative from National Grid who's been here for almost three hours, as well as one of my constituents, who had very significant concerns, and I appreciate him being here tonight as well. I placed this matter on the agenda for tonight. I had, and I'll make the assumption that other councils may have received calls, I received numerous phone calls and other contact, email and otherwise, beginning somewhere around the 19th or 20th of July, and those concerns continued. I contacted Kristin Powers, the Park and Forestry Department, with regard to the concerns that residents were bringing to my attention with regard to tree trimming work that was being done ostensibly by a contractor for National Grid, started out in streets like Clement Terrace, Elliot Avenue, Summit Avenue, President's Hill. I was hearing from folks all over the city, actually, concerning this. And went out and took a ride around myself, took some of my own photos, I actually... I actually have some photos that were presented tonight by my constituent who's here, Mr. Krupp, who lives on Evans Street. And I'm going to pass those around, Mr. Fatsies, if I can hand those to you, and pass that in that direction. And as I said, the concerns that I was hearing was to the scope and the nature and the extent of the removal of limbs from trees that were, that are within the right-of-way for the power lines that service the neighborhoods in our city. I did mention to Ms. Powers at the time, when I spoke to her, that I believed that the city ordinance that we passed back in 2007, the Tree Protection Ordinance, addressed this matter. She followed up with a, she CC'd me on copy of a memorandum that she sent to the city solicitor, and it says, reads as follows, "As you are aware, the city's tree protection ordinance attached here too maintains a section relative to the practice of V-cutting." It's page eight of that ordinance. "This department has received several complaints about the work of Lewis Tree Service, a contractor working for National Grid. By right, National Grid has the authority to maintain trees, both public and private, that impact power lines. Safety is a major consideration, and their policies dictate that they cut tree limbs back from the power lines up to eight feet on either side and 12 feet vertically. In some instances, the end result takes on the appearance of V-cutting, which conflicts with the city's tree protection mandate. I am forwarding this to your attention as Counselor Coughlin has inquired as to whether or not the city's ordinance would prevent the pruning practice from occurring. I appreciate your review and action with respect to this matter." And I'm going to ask Mr. Timmons a few moments from now to address and respond to this memorandum and the concerns that I raised. My concerns were so much, so that even though I was in Europe for a couple of weeks, I made some phone calls, because I continued to receive complaints from constituents. So, I appreciate you coming here, and please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Kim Schneider, S-C-H-N-E-I-D-E-R. I'm Community Investment Coordinator for the City of Quincy, for National Grid.
Kim, are you familiar with the city's tree protection ordinance?
Not entirely. I'm new to the City of Quincy, so please forgive me. I've spoke with Chris Maltrup, who is the arborist for National Grid that handles the area, and he informed me that he was in close contact with Ms. Powers, informed her of what work we'd be doing in the locations, and we were given our blessing, the blessing to proceed.
Okay. I'm not sure that that's entirely the story that...
I won't debate that. I can follow up upon return tomorrow.
Okay. Because it does, the city's tree ordinance does require that any work being done on a city tree, utility work, construction in the streets, or whatever, that that has to be approved by the city's arborist, and the Park and Forestry Department has to oversee...
Just to familiarize myself, I'm sorry, is that Joe Koch?
Joe Koch.
And I believe that Chris Maltrup was also in contact with him and informed him what we'd be doing, and had not received any notice from him that we could not proceed.
Now, the complaints that I had received, and I'm not sure, well, I'm assuming that you, you're familiar with the type of work that has been done in the city.
Absolutely.
Have you...
And there's been extensive work in Quincy this year. If it's any consolation, there's only three miles that are planned for next year. We have a five-year rotation where we do tree trimming, and it's done by circuits, poorly performing circuits, because not only safety is an issue, but reliability is an issue. So, I know that Quincy was extensively done this year, but next year will be very limited.
Is there, I'm assuming there must be personnel and costs that cause it to be on a five-year cycle?
Correct.
You know...
Our goal is not to be out there annually, except through another program that we have where we're addressing reliability issues for feeders, poorly performing feeders, where we also target dying trees, and we have a program for replacing those trees as well. But that's separate from what we're doing today, what we're discussing today.
The city's ordinance requires the use of what's called best practices.
Mm-hmm.
I wrote the ordinance, did a lot of research, actually used a template in part that was recommended by the International Society of Arboriculture.
Mm-hmm.
And my recollection in reviewing their recommendations, a number of things concerned me. Number one, they do not recommend that this type of work be done during a looming season for trees, that this type of work should be done during a dormancy period. Is that something that National Grid considers in terms of when they contract this type of work out? Do you know? And I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. I do not know that, but I would be happy to go back to our arborist and find out when scheduling, if it's just something we do year-round, or if it would be something that we could do during non-blooming periods of fall or wintertime.
The city, just for, as a point of information, typically, the city itself, with its own crews, does most of its tree trimming work during the winter months.
I was aware of that.
And that's, in part, because of personnel concerns, but also, I think it's also a reflection of the recognition that best practices would dictate that that type of work be done during periods of dormancy.
I'd be certainly happy to go back and propose that to our local crews and to our area supervisor.
And looking at the ISA recommendations, they also, they also address in terms of the amount of crown that's removed. It appears, from at least some of the photos that Mr. Krupp provided and my own observations of a neighborhood that I've lived in for 55 years where the work has been done, that some of the work exceeds the recommendations of the ISA. They recommend a maximum of 25% removal. And in some of these, these photos that I've seen and the trees that I've seen myself, I mean, this tree here on Evans Street, more than 50% of the crown was removed. I mean, this, this tree did have the appearance of a sphere, of a ball. If you look at it now, it's cut half.
No, the parameters are a little bit different than what you quoted. You said 12 feet. It's 10 feet above and below and 6 feet side to side. I haven't seen those pictures, so if, could you send those to me?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Could you send those to me?
No, I'd be happy to have you take a look at them, if you'd like, tonight, because I have to tell you, and this is, this is nothing against National Grid, but when I went driving around the neighborhood, I was completely shocked by the extent of the removal of tree limbs. And what really concerns me is, cityscape trees are an asset. Under GASP accounting principles, the city is required to account for all of the trees in the city as an asset. And when I see these conditions as a result of the work that has been done, it diminishes the value of that asset. When you combine that, and this is, you know, this is another matter that's still pending, when you combine this with what Massachusetts Shade Tree Trust is saying about gas leaks and their impact on the root structure, we've got these trees that are getting it literally from both ends. I mean, quite honestly, it looks like the Texas Chainsaw Massacre on some of these city streets. And I understand that there's a balance that needs to be obtained between ensuring reliable electrical service and that storms don't interfere with the power lines. But this, this, to me, the extent, you know, of the V-cutting, the removal of half of the crowns of some of these trees, seems to me that this company, that, you know, and perhaps it's, perhaps it's them and not National Grid, but it seems to me that this company that's been doing the work has been going to a greater extent than perhaps is necessary in order to provide that balance. And that's really the concern that I have. That's the concern that I've been hearing from my constituents.
I hear that concern. I will sit down with our arborist tomorrow and go over what the parameters are. I know that our contractors, Lewis being one of them, have a very strict specification that they're supposed to adhere to. If it, if it looks like that that's not happening, then we need to review that and address that immediately. I am in the office with Chris tomorrow, so I will convey your concerns and come back to you with what we find and try to work with you on ways of addressing this concern.
Now, has, has the, I had, when I spoke to Ms. Powers, I think it was a couple of days ago, she had indicated that there had been a suspension of the work in the city at this point in time, based on the concerns that have been raised.
That's correct.
That is correct, okay. I just wanted to validate that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't want to monopolize the time on this, but if there are any other councilors that want to ask some questions, and, you know, I'd be happy to have somebody join me in this. Counsel Ramandi?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one question. And with all the resources that National Grid has and all the work that you do, have you ever taken the opportunity to have a professional consultant, landscaper, arborist, determine either from a negative standpoint, the damage, or a positive standpoint, the ability of a tree to either reconstruct itself or continue to thrive with this drastic V kind of cut? Just from my anecdotal experience, when I see a tree that's been severely cut back, because we are New England, we're not Florida, we're not Alabama, the weight of the snow has less dispersment, and it settles on one limb or another, decay sets in, and eventually that tree is impacted, and the lifespan is probably, well, at least from an anecdotal standpoint, it seems to be severely curtailed. I'm just looking for some professional expertise that would indicate that what you folks do is not only in the interest of public safety, I understand that, but to what extent does it affect the lifeline of the trees that are being impacted? Do you have anything that would suggest that it's not detrimental, that it's not negative, that it doesn't destroy them?
No, but it does train the tree to go in the direction that we want it to. That's, that's our goal, to train the tree to grow away from the power lines.
You know, it's, again, from an anecdotal standpoint, it just doesn't seem, but by the time it gets to the point that maybe it was large enough to get around those lines, it's gone, it's dead. Declayed, the weight of, the weight of the snow on any one particular limb impacts it, and there goes, at that point, probably a $5,000 tree.
Mm-hmm. We've got a program also, it's called EHTM, and forgive me as I read my notes, because they change our acronyms all the time. It's Enhanced Hazard Tree Mitigation. What it, what we do is we go out and we take a look at trees that are interfering with reliability, do a study on why it's interfering, whether or not that tree is damaged or dying, and remove it, and then replace it with a tree that will grow within the parameters that we need it to grow. So, it won't grow high enough, it won't grow wide enough. It's also called Right Tree, Right Place. So, we've got a couple of programs that have to deal with, with Mother Nature.
Do you recommend certain trees to be planted in urban...
We do. We do. And I only brought one copy, so please forgive me. And that was all the trees that we, we recommend, not only for the public way, but also private that might grow out into, into our wirelines.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I think this should be part of the, if this is going to go to committee, or part of the Environmental Committee, maybe this brochure could be helpful.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Counselor Macamie?
I did receive complaints about this in Ward 6, and National Grid did work with some of the neighbors in the Atlantic Neighborhood that had some severe tree cutting. But I'm, I look at these pictures, and I don't, I don't think I saw anything that rose to this level in Ward 6. And I guess, I know this is a difficult role for you tonight, to be at the point of this spear, because obviously, you didn't cut these trees. But I, I would like to see some assessment of some of these more dramatic cuts on the tree. I mean, this tree here, the likelihood of this tree being able to accommodate an ice storm during the winter without those limbs coming down, I just, this photo, I just, I guess I would ask, and with the Council President's insight on this, because I know he authored the original Shade Tree Ordinance, maybe we can score and track some of these trees, and, you know, I would like to see, to the extent that we're damaged, made whole, some of these trees have to be replaced. And also, I think that the person that you guys contracted with to cut the trees, who professes to understand what's good for trees, obviously, they, they may be a source where you have to recover for their actions.
Mm-hmm.
And I would like to see you explore that, so that we can address...
We do review our contractors annually, based on performance, safety, many different issues, and if they're not performing to the level that we want, then we, then we no longer use them.
But how about when they actually create a situation when they've damaged, and these are assets of the City of Quincy?
And there are repercussions for that, so we can, we can review anything.
But how we made whole is municipality for these trees that have been put in jeopardy, which...
Well, unfortunately, a 50-year-old tree cannot be replaced.
No, but I think that we can get, I mean, you know, they plant pretty significant plantings.
And we do have a program in place for that.
You know, that's what I'd be concerned about, is, you know, how do we address the damage that's been done?
Well, my plan, and thank you, Counselor, my plan is to move this matter into the Environmental and Health Committee, and I plan to have a follow-up on this, because I'm gravely concerned by the conditions, and it's not just, if you go down Elliot Avenue, even if you don't know the street, you just, you just hit the beginning of that street, and you look at those trees that run down, and it is, it would blow your mind, absolutely blow your mind. I've never seen, and I've lived in this, in this area, as I said, my entire life, 55 years, and I'm, I'm sure there's been circuits of tree pruning that have occurred over the course of that 55 years, and I've never seen the extent of the pruning and the removal of limbs that I, that I've seen during this round. And as I say, I think, I think this needs further exploration, and I'm trusting your word.
That is my plan. What I'll do is I'll have Chris drive me the route of what we've trimmed so far this year. If you could provide me with some of the ones that you're very concerned with, that way I can, I can go back to some other people and, and present that to them. We can come up with a plan of action, either for dealing with past issues or avoiding issues cropping up in the future.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a, I think there's a kinder and gentler way of getting to the goal than what we've seen so far. And as I said, I don't want there to be any mistake in terms of intent. Everyone in this well wants to make sure that every citizen of the city receives power through any storm. But, you know, I think, I think most, most people love their shade trees. We get, every one of us here gets calls for additional plantings, and when a tree meets, you know, some demise, the tree's taken down, immediately, people want a new tree planted in its place. So, I think there's a great deal of support amongst our constituency for, you know, good, healthy trees in the city, and anything that's going to take away... And anything that's going to take away from that is certainly something that we ought to be concerned about. As I said, you know, unfortunately, I have more material than I want, and I still held on to it three years later from when I wrote the ordinance. And I was looking at it today. It was a binder of material from the International Society of Arboriculture, and I was looking through some of their recommendations in terms of tree pruning. And it's a complicated art, it really is. And as I said, some of the things that they recommended, it appeared to me were not being complied with. And that's just my armchair, unprofessional observations. But, you know, I certainly want to make sure, as do constituents like Mr. Krupp, who contacted me and all of these other councilors, that, you know, we're protecting the city's assets. So I appreciate your coming here tonight. I appreciate your patience in waiting to this point in time.
It's my pleasure. I wish I had a little bit more information, but I can make a commitment that I will follow up on this and you will hear more from me.
Okay. Fair enough. Any further questions of councilors for Kim, Councilor LaFerris? Or do you have a question?
Yep, three maybe to Mr. Fatsies. The city arborist we have on staff, have they reviewed these trees that are in question and made any sort of findings?
Well, the city arborist has been called to a number of neighborhoods. I was actually called out to Glendale Avenue myself one morning, and I went up there. And I was given somewhat contradictory information from the gentlemen that were pruning the trees. You know, what I was getting is, you know, what they could do. And I said, "Well, apparently, you know, I understand that there's above the tree," and I can't remember this, "how much above the tree you had to go, how much below the tree, et cetera." And then it was explained to me, "Well, we're not going to be able to get back here, so we're going to kind of do a bigger job," which is what you're suggesting. It was ridiculous, in my own opinion, you know, having witnessed it. The city arborist has opined as well that this is excessive. And, you know, we could get into, you know, pruning 101, as the council president pointed out. There may be differences of opinion between two, you know, folks that are doing the pruning on the trees. But, you know, one of the comments you made before is there is funding available. Has any money ever come to the city of Quincy for to replace these trees in the past?
Unfortunately, I just got Quincy as a territory.
I know, I know you did. But, I mean, that might be one of your...
So I don't have that information. I know we've given trees to situate when we did the ACT program, and there were historic trees that were diseased and had to come down. All through our territories, from New York all the way down to...
No, and to that point, my only question is, if you could check and see if there is any precedence and if there has been anything that has been done for the city in the past. I just, again, as a representative of the mayor's office here, we've gotten a great number of calls on a couple of days, and which did cause me to go out and actually see the guys on-site doing the job. There was a little bit of, there was a little bit of a dialogue, which was not as respectful as it could have been in both directions, but I understand tempers, et cetera. But, you know, part of, looking at the track record might be part of this equation too. Has, you know, has the city ever recovered any damages on this in the past? Because in this particular case, again, we went around the city and we saw a number of places that this was very disturbing.
I won't deny that some of these trimmings are dramatic.
Yeah, they're dramatic.
Especially when you're going from a full tree to where we've cut it back to, that it's...
I felt like I was watching Charlie Brown's Christmas again. I just want you to know, there was a certain part of it that was, it just seemed over the top. And again, these are in neighborhoods, and, you know, part of that charm of a neighborhood is whether the trees, as you go down the street, you know, have that look that, you know, adds to the neighborhood. This does nothing more than, again, when you go as far as you went, I understand the safety issue, but this had nothing more than, if anything else, to frame the wires more than hide the wires. And I'm not suggesting you can hide them, but this was just over the top, so that's...
And to further compound this, the tree planting portion of the park recreation, but the Parks Department budget was not funded this year. So not only are we no longer doing a tree planting this fiscal year, now trees throughout the city that we do have are being diminished. And, Mr. Fatsies, I was thinking more about Disney World's shaped trees, if we could, anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions of Kim before we move on to, I want to ask the unanimous consent of my colleagues to just have Mr. Krupp come up and say a few words because I know how significantly involved in this issue he's been.
I actually want to ask a question.
Sure.
Oh, okay.
What do you, anybody?
If you can, you have to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
My name's Peter Krupp. I live on 92 Evans Street. My wife went out in the morning and was screaming, "They're going to trim our trees." All right, anyway, so I went out and saw what happened. The question I had was about trees on private property. What's the law on that? What's the policy on that? Because the trees they're going to trim are on our yard, in our yard. They are not on the city right away. The only reason the wires are, they need to be trimmed is because the utility pole is slanted 25 degrees. I called National Grid Customer Service and basically was told that they had no responsibility for straightening it out. And in fact, I was told it was Verizon's problem. And they gave me Verizon's customer service number. And I suggested that since these were three-phase, high-tension, you know, lines, which were a hazard, that they might take an interest in getting the problem solved. And they said it was my problem and I don't have a name, but I know you keep a log of these calls. And it was last Wednesday, 92 Evans Street. Right, right. And then in the meantime, so the crew, you know, we signed, I guess we had to sign a waiver. You know, they said we won't, want to let you cut our trees. So the crew was sort of laughing about it. And they said, "God, I don't understand why National Grid doesn't move the poles across the street since there are no trees across the street to be trimmed." Okay? And, you know, they thought it was pretty funny. And then, I don't know who they were, but anyway. So then, the next trip of land, where there were a lot of trees which in fact interfere with the power lines, they skipped. They didn't do anything, not on our property. They just skipped it. So you might want to find out.
It's down by circuit, yeah.
You know, I mean, I don't know who they are.
Right, right. So I'll follow up.
Okay.
That's my department.
But, you know...
Go through an IBF or anything. We'll be here tomorrow.
Okay, I did call the state, Department of Public Utilities, and I sent them pictures of the utility pole, and they said that you're in violation of the law, that the pole needs to be, because there's a tap line coming off, it's pulling the pole, it's going down Pope Street, and it's causing it to do this over a period of time. And that you need to do something to straighten it out, either put another pole across the street, or else remove the pole and put in a foundation of some type. But I mean, you know, that's...
And that pole right on Evans?
All right, it's on the corner of Evans and Pope. Anyway, so thank you for your time. If you have any questions, you know.
Thank you. Thank you for the photos that you provided as well.
All right, no problem.
They were very helpful. Mr. Timmons? Do you have a moment? Did you, could you just? I don't know if you had an opportunity to address the memorandum that Ms. Powers had sent to you back on July 22 regarding rights, duties, and obligations of National Grid?
Well, I have looked at it, yes. Some of this is in the area of a jump ball, and there's a question about the application of our ordinance to their regulations. On our agenda, we refer to it as destruction of trees, and National Grid refers to this as, I mean, they use words like mitigation, and essentially they're preserving their power lines and the ability of their system to deliver electric service to the community. So there are some competing tensions. And I know in some communities, they've pushed back under Chapter 87, the public shade tree law. And, but, you know, the outcomes are somewhat nebulous because what I learned was that National Grid's contractors, you know, they're tree people, and they go in and they don't want to be anywhere near the power lines. That's what was explained to me to be one of the main causes of what communities consider to be excess cutting, that unlike a trained National Grid person who's comfortable near the power lines, you know, these tree companies get these contracts and, you know, they send people in. And there's a rule, I think it's like 9390 or something, where they keep a certain distance from the lines and they remove everything. So there's nothing terribly black and white about all this. I think that starting the dialogue as you have tonight is important, and making them aware at National Grid that this is a community that values trees is very important. But by the same token, from the community perspective, we have to be aware that, you know, this isn't some frolic in, you know, total disregard of our shade tree interests. They're merely out trying to preserve the utility line. So there are competing interests here, and we just have to keep working on it, I think. I know there are some other communities that really push back hard on this, but the outcome of that pushback, like the, I spoke with the town council up in Andover, and generally it ends up being more on a dialogue basis moving forward and more interaction with the local tree warden before they come in and do their program. I know you folks have a tree warden, but that particular individual has a different motivation from the community tree warden. So that's essentially what I found, Counselor. I don't know if any of it was helpful, probably little of it, but, you know, it's been a nice summer.
Well, I appreciate your reflections, shall we say.
No, we have work ahead of us, that's all, both parties. And I do think there are some questions that are best not necessarily discussed in this forum about the applicability of our ordinance and our ability to rely on that. Because, you know, the regulations that National Grid's following are, you know, they've been around a lot longer, as have the utility line, so...
I understand that, but I do appreciate the fact that you have, you know, you have referenced that there is a state governing law with regard to public trees. And from my discussions with the DPU, there is no statutory authority for utility companies to simply come in and wholesale cut public trees. So I think that needs to be stated for the record as well.
Right, it's not statutory. It's a regulatory practice, that's correct.
Right. Thank you. Once again, Kim, I appreciate your coming tonight. I hope that this is going to be the beginning of some positive dialogue between the city and National Grid in order to accomplish the goals that we both...
I do as well, and I look forward to working with you, sir.
Okay.
As with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gatto?
Before you move on to the next item, I was just wondering, item one, I was about 10 minutes tardy. I was wondering if I could be listed in affirmative on that, on the tourism vote?
Appropriation of $80,000 reserved for appropriation tourism saying to be transferred hotel-motel tax. Councilor Gatto?
Yes.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You are properly recorded.
That's all we got.
With the unanimous consent of my colleagues, I'd like to take out of order item number 10, striping roadways, painting crosswalks, because we have Mr. Gillan here, and I know some other folks. He's been here for well over, about four hours now, I think. Yes, Mr. Gillan, if you could approach the podium.
Couldn't be.
Jack, you've brought some reading material. Is this on the summer reading list?
This is for the people who don't believe there's a shortage. There's a shortage of trees, thermal plastic.
Trees, by the way, have a calming effect on road traffic, do they not?
They do.
I'm being serious now.
When we were looking at the downtown plans, the first plan, neither of the three plans showed a median on that swing from Hancock to Washington. So, you know, based on my years with Sasaki Associates, I did ask for the median with the planted trees and stuff like that, so that we'd have traffic calming, bring the speeds down, because the site distance was like 800 feet. You would have speed through there about 40 miles an hour, but with the trees, the furniture, and everything else we're doing, it'll calm that right down, Counselor. I don't know what you want to do here. I mean, if you got, I got about four minutes' worth of summarizing what I just gave you, and just...
25 words or less.
Well, I don't know if I could do that. I mean, obviously, there's a worldwide shortage of thermal plastic, and I haven't seen that in my 39 years in the business. So I'd like to give you real quickly a short history of what we do, why the shortage, alternatives we looked at, and when we expect the product. So pretty much as quickly as I can. I came to Quincy in '92, and we used the waterborne paint and the roadway lines and the hydrocarbon blocks for the crosswalks. The blocks melted and that applicator, some of you remember, it looked like a hot dog pushcart or an ice cream thing, and they had the little, the melted block would go down to the bottom, and we'd have a shoe that put the crosswalk line down. And it took quite a long time for it to melt that block, and the crew had to wait until another block was melted in order to continue, probably after doing about 40 feet, they had to wait and melt another block. And it took forever. The mid-'90s, we bought that trail that you've seen around town with the melting kettles in the back, and we were able to then melt the granular hydrocarbon pellets in the kettles and apply the product with the same type of an applicator, but it was already melted. Not only were my department employees able to increase productivity, but the cost of the product also decreased from about $0.67 a pound down to about $0.43 a pound. And the crosswalks, they lasted about three to four years, but we did have sufficient personnel at that time to redo the city about 25% of the city every year. So it took about four years, and we were able to get that done. Well, in 2002, the department switched from the hydrocarbon plastic to the alkali plastic. And the reason for this was that it did have a sharper, crisper line, but I hadn't done that when we started because these people weren't used to the plastic, and the hoses were easier to clean with the hydrocarbon. But the outlet that they switched to lasted a little bit longer. But the outlet that they switched to lasted a little bit longer. Now, they were lasting like 25 years, but with a smaller crew, I was able to reapply 20% of the city every year. So again, we did the VR five years, and we were able to do it again. So that worked quite well. The city of Quincy back at that time, in my time too, back in '96 and through 2002, we had the reputation of applying more plastic lines per year than any other municipality in the state. We had a pretty good system going here. People came from other season towns to see what we were doing in Quincy and how we were doing such a low price. Well, the common shortage was due to three factors. The two chemicals used in the product are in short supply. The chemical methyl methacrylate is also used for a binder, and the titanium oxide has a high coefficient of reflectivity. And we got both of those in China. And it was brought into, there's only three manufacturers in the country that we could get our thermoplastic front. Well, the recent turmoil in China resulted in their domestic shortages, and they put a halt to the exports to the United States. And our manufacturers here didn't expect that. And China also increased the roadway construction in their country, as well as in India, and they were getting a good bulk of that product and not even having it exported out of the country there. Now, both of those raw materials have other uses with high demands as well. The automobile industry uses a high degree of that titanium oxide, and then they pay a premium price for it. So again, we're in competition for that. Coinciding with the problem in China, the global economic downturn led to manufacturers to scale back on all products they didn't think to be a market. However, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act created a high demand for the product, just as manufacturers had just scaled back the production and the number of employees. Again, with less product available, one manufacturer even shut down a facility, and one titanium dioxide plant in the United Kingdom suffered a fatal explosion, and that was also closed for a number of weeks. Obviously, I thought maybe I could mix some of the materials that were out there and patch some of the paint that I'd been peeling back. But when I looked into it, you really cannot mix the products such as plastic, epoxy, and paint in a wood crosswalk. If we put plastic down on top of plastic, obviously, that'll fill in the gaps. But not only that, the plastic will actually melt the previous plastic and it'll bond better to it. And it'll also bond very well to the bituminous concrete aggregate, the bitcon, the asphalt as you're looking at it. If you look at the alternatives, it's just the paint and epoxy. But both of that, those products will peel back off of plastic, and even if I plasticed over them again next year, the plastic would break off and it wouldn't bond and have no adhesion at all. Now, again, when we looked at these alternatives, the epoxy paint and the waterborne paint, they don't prove any promising either. The waterborne only lasts about a year. It costs less, but we no longer have the staff to apply these lines to every crosswalk in the city every year. We are much smaller than we were back in the early '90s. And the epoxy paint system was also investigated. The product did last a complete year if properly mixed, but there were also two issues that were a problem with epoxy. One resulted in the two-part product in a nozzle not flowing, and one part would leave the nozzle and it would not solidify. It would go over the roadway and track all over the place. And another time that we were looking at in some of the literature, the two-part product actually hired within the gun itself, and then it took an awful long time and money just to clean out and rebuild the equipment. Moreover, the epoxy only lasted slightly longer than the paint, but it cost quite a bit more. So I talked to my friends over in town of Brookline, where I worked for 20 years, and they've said that they've discontinued the whole line of epoxy. They don't even do it anymore, but they pay contractors to come in and do the whole town on an annual basis. Now, the good news. We expect the thermoplastic shortage to end soon, and we expect to see delivery of five tons within the next two weeks. They told me I would have it before the end of August. Our supplier, which was a little bidder, they were the only bidder. When we put it out in April, other companies just, they said no bid, but they said that they couldn't guarantee any sort of a delivery date. But our supplier, Sharon Williams, has informed us that he's working with their plant to ship our order by the end of this month. And again, I was talking with them and saying, you know what, I really need the product because if I don't get the plastic, I'll probably go back to paint, and I'll sell all my thermoplastic equipment, and we won't need any in the future as well. That's when we kind of got their attention. They decided to send us the five tons. So we also spoke with other major pavement marking contractors in the area, and they're just starting to receive theirs as well. Traffic markings of Franklin completed a small job up here at Quincy High School on Saturday night. We stopped them and said, what's the story? You do have the plastic now? And they had indicated that they had run out, but they had just gotten a small order in. So we're competing with very large contractors who go up and down the East Coast just for a small amount of thermoplastic. But it is starting to come in. And they had gotten their plastic from Swaco in Tennessee. Well, I had some problems with the Swaco product two years ago. It was peeling off, and at this point, I'd even take that even to get me through the winter. But when we had asked them, really, Swaco themselves said we can't guarantee delivery, and they didn't provide a bid as well. The American Traffic Safety Service Association has indicated that their production levels are coming back, but they may not be back at full operation until even October this year or maybe over the winter. One thing I will tell you right now is I do expect this five ton to come in any day now. They told me that they'd give me a date, but they didn't. I checked my email before coming up here tonight, and it wasn't there. But they do say that we will have that, and that I'll probably have my 10 ton right after that for the 15. So in essence, we believe that our setup is the best for the city. We will be doing 25, 20%, one-fifth of the year, every year. And we will be able to get caught up and make sure everything's back. We did do all the school zones last year. We did all the school routes last year. So that should not be a problem. So I think that once we get the 15 tons in that I'm expecting, we will be able to get approximately 60 intersections completed disconstruction season. I hope that wasn't too boring, but I can't answer a lot of questions, except if you want to get the chemical compound, why methyl acrylate does bond better than the titanium oxide, or what it actually does. I'd have to ask my brother.
Counselor Ramondi. Thank you, Mr. President.
That's why I didn't give it to you.
Jack, we're asking a lot of parents and students this year. There's been some reductions in school budgets and police budgets, and we're asking kids to walk longer and cross more streets. So my first question is, are you confident that crosswalks, areas where we expect youngsters to crosswalk to school, that all those areas will be striped and ready to go by the beginning of the school year?
No.
Or are we going to have a problem?
Again, two weeks is labor day. I don't have the product yet. They told me they'd deliver the five. As far as the schools go, like I just mentioned to you, I did every crosswalk at every school last year, and I did all the school routes as well.
So that's what I'm saying. Are you confident that those crosswalks are good?
I didn't go out and examine all of them, so I mean.
But the ones you've seen?
They were good last year, and there's no reason for them not to be this year, Counselor.
Now, as far as roadways, places like Faxon Lane?
Faxon Lane.
That's been recently, is there an expectation that that would be striped this year?
Those are going to be done.
Crosswalks like Sweeney Funeral Home?
The lane lines, I'm going to put out a contract for the lane lines. It's cheaper for me to have a contractor do the long lane lines than it is to do that in house. You recall back in '90s, we did all lane lines in house. We had the little cones, and we were going miles. But we have less people than we did back then.
So Faxon Lane will get done this year?
Faxon Lane will get done this construction season.
Areas like Sweeney's, Dennis Sweeney Funeral Home, Elm Street, Bad Street?
We did Elm Street last fall, and we did that with the plastic. Elm Street should be.
But it's gone. It's eradicated, Jack. There's nothing.
I'll take a look at Elm Street.
That's a real bad one. People go from the parking lot to his funeral home. That's a real bad spot. So crosswalks like that, what's the expectation of those crosswalks getting done this year?
Well, I don't, I know that we're only going to be able to do about 60 intersections.
I'm sorry?
60 intersections we're going to be able to do with this town that I get right now. Hopefully, over the wintertime, the production will be up, and we'll be getting ready to go first thing in April, so maybe March, depending how the weather breaks. But as far as right now, I have a list of very high crosswalk locations where we get a lot of pedestrians that are crossing.
You should add that one.
And I'll add, but, and I also am working with that list with the mayor's office. But as you know, the reason why we didn't publicize that list right away is that's dynamic. As we wait longer, more crosswalks deteriorate. And then some of the more important ones may not be on the list, and all of a sudden, they become higher priority. So it's a dynamic list that we look at almost on a weekly basis. So again, we'll do the best we can do as soon as this starts coming in. But this is a nationwide problem. There's only five suppliers in the country, and they only get this product from one country, and that's China.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Jack. It's always a pleasure.
Nothing else.
I just want to tell you, I was in Palermo, Italy on Monday, August 2nd, and I thought of you because it was about 11 o'clock at night. I'm hearing a droning noise out in front of my hotel. I open up the curtains, and what is the Palermo Department of Public Works doing? They're putting thermoplastic down. I almost went out and asked them if they could send some back to Quincy.
There you go. Well, I would have appreciated that, honestly. You know, we used to, you probably recall, we used to be out here all the time at nights in the downtown area of Waltham, North Quincy. We'd be out in the middle of the night, 2:00 in the morning, and we used to be able to get the production up, because even though you pay in overtime, you could do it twice as fast. So you know what? You're ahead of the game if you do that, you know? I'm wasting your time now.
11 o'clock at night, they did one side of the street. 5:00 in the morning, they come back and they did the other side.
Well, it doesn't take us that long. We could do a lockback on that.
Well, you know, they take a little time off in between. Little siesta. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Gillen. Any further questions of Mr. Gillen about road striping? We're good? Okay. Counselor Ramondi has promised me he's going to be very brief. Chief Keenan. We don't want you to be here when we waive the 11 o'clock rule.
Good evening.
July, and it's been a while, so I thought, because we're going to be here, if you could give us a quick update. I know that you provided me with an update, and I'm going to be delivering that to the folks who attended the meeting and that whole area. But there were a series of car breaks, a series of house breaks. There were some issues about the upkeep of some parks graffiti. So can you provide the counsel perhaps some of the watchers or listeners who may be tuning in as to what you've been doing since the last meeting? And we are going to be hopefully having another meeting in September. We just don't have the day finalized yet. But give us an update as to where we're at, what's happening, have we made any arrests, and what have the latest reports as far as criminal activity in the Ward Two section? What does it look like?
Certainly. As a result of the meeting July 8th, we met with the, down at the four of a clubhouse at the counsel's request with some of the neighbors. They had some concerns about issues in the Lower Pointe area, specifically the Mound Street Avalon Beach area and those adjoining neighborhoods. Some of the issues that were raised, and they were raised quite clearly, were quality of life issues. There was issues with homelessness, the kids, the ongoing problems with the kids down in the area, litter and graffiti. So we took a number of initiatives to try and resolve some of those issues and make the neighbors feel safe and happy in their homes and their neighborhoods. One of the things that we did immediately is we increased patrols in the area. We alerted our special operations unit. We also had our community police officers pay particular attention to that area. It was as a result of 11 car breaks that happened right around the June 14th area. Since then, I'm pleased to say that there have been no further breaks down in that area. There have been no further car breaks. So we think it might have been an isolated incident. They do pop up throughout the city. We did increase the patrols. We also contacted the park department for some cleanup. Some of the issues that were raised were the condition of some of the parks, and particularly the Mound Street, with trash, litter, and some of the overgrowth. I spoke with Kristin Powers personally, and she's addressed some of those issues. I was actually down there today with Captain Dugan. We walked the entire area, and there is a noticeable difference, in my opinion, anyway. We also, one of the issues was raised was on Avalon Beach, the seawall. I contacted Commissioner Pendeville, and he was kind enough to send his people down. They've since repainted the entire seawall. It looks pristine now. That park and that beach is in pretty good shape. It looks excellent. We also sent our community police officers and Lieutenant Tobin, the day shift commander, and Captain Gillen as well down there to take a look at the area. They walked the area on Mound Street between the four, between the Mound Street Beach and the Town River Yacht Club, and also on the other side by the marina, to check for homeless encampments. There weren't any there. They found nothing there. We actually went and we reviewed it again today, and I found no indication that there was a homeless, homeless folk staying in that, those woods area. Although, we do know that they do congregate down there. We did make one arrest on a house break. It was a person staying in the area at a relative's house that was doing house breaks in the area. That person is currently incarcerated. And we've also made a number of arrests. We stepped up, not a zero tolerance policy, because I'm not a big fan of zero tolerance, because I think the officers need discretion in doing their jobs, but we put the pressure on down there. We made four arrests down there, two at Mound Street and two on Avalon Beach for disorderly people and public intoxication. So we've stepped up the pressure down there, and I think, you know, we've resolved a lot of the issues. I look forward to meeting with the constituents in September at some point to outline what we've done down there. But I think we're making positive progress.
Chief, there was an article in the paper about a house break, and some valuables were stolen, some pieces of value, other pieces of sentimental value. And at least from reporting in the paper, the owners of the home or the property weren't too happy or pleased, satisfied. Would you want to comment on what happened in that event and moving forward?
I'm actually somewhat familiar with the incident. I didn't actually read the story because I was away on vacation, but it was brought to my attention. From what I understand, and, you know, like I say, I'm not completely versed on it, but the homeowners took it upon themselves to go to, I believe, a pawn shop, and they recovered their property. We do encourage that. We do encourage participation from people that are victims of crime, because we can't get to all of those, the pawn shops and whatnot. And some of the things are a little bit unique to you. What you may describe as stolen to me as a police officer, a ring, it might be a gold ring or whatever with an inscription in it. A lot of times, those things are unique to the person. They can go out to the pawn shops, they can take a look at it, and perhaps they can help us work with them to try and solve their issue and recover their property. We're more than willing, if somebody were to say, go to a pawn shop and find something, we're definitely more than willing. We contact the pawn shop right away, they put a hold on that item, we'll go down there and recover the item for the person. So it's a collaborative effort to work with them.
I want to talk about that, Chief, because, I don't know, maybe a couple of years back, Mr. Clerk, with the support of the Quincy Police Department, we expanded the whole period where certain jewelry stores that melt down gold in particular, I think they only had to hold the material for 10 or 14 days. We extended that, I think, to 30?
To 30, that's correct.
Correct, and it's been effective.
We changed the odds.
And the specificity of the reporting is now there, and it wasn't there. They have to present it publicly and all that.
Correct. We're actually looking to bolster that by going, making it digital, go online with it, so that the jewelry companies and the pawn shops can go directly.
So I guess the question, is that working? Is that?
It's very effective. I get, the pawn shops are given to my, were sent to my office, and we distribute those to the detective bureau on pretty much a daily basis. I'd say at least four or five times a week, we're getting those notifications from the area pawn shops.
Have items been recovered that were not ordered?
They have, yeah. Absolutely, they have.
Now, there was some sense that we ought to move into the pawn shop direction as well. Is that something that we could work together to tighten up the poining as well as the melting down? Do you feel the need there is?
I believe so. I think it's an area that needs to be addressed. Because the other portion you just spoke of has been very effective, and we have made some recoveries that normally would have been either dispersed or, you know, or destroyed or whatever.
Mr. Chairman, this, the meeting was held a typical hot summer night, and over 100 people showed up, and they weren't happy with anybody. And they had a right to be. They were very upset about what was happening in the neighborhood, an awful lot of car breaks. And I guess today, Chief, there still hasn't been anyone arrested on the cars?
No.
Yeah?
Has not.
Number of home breaks, and at least we have some.
We've actually made a couple of arrests on, not just that area, but a couple of other areas as well.
So they're very frustrated, and we talked about quality of life issues, the graffiti and other aspects. And I appreciate the fact that when the chief was there, and he's done an awful lot of follow-up, he found some money to have some officers on extra patrol going to the Quincy Pointe area. And we'll be following up and appreciate the update. I'll be reducing that in a letter form and sending that out to the area. And I just want to assure the folks who may be watching that we'll be having another meeting in September to have an update, address any continuing issues, and the chief is willing to attend the meeting and respond to any questions. So thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. President, for taking this matter out of order. Thank you.
Counselor Finn. Yeah, just very quickly and through you to the chief. Chief, you mentioned
Chief, you mentioned that there were some arrests for public intoxication and disorderly conduct that were made.
Correct.
Do those folks have addresses that were arrested?
I'm not positive on 100% of them, but a lot of them are homeless.
Okay. A lot of arrests were homeless?
A couple of them were homeless, yes.
All right. Term the number of arrests that, did that amount it to?
There were four. There were two. There were a number of arrests throughout the area, but the two that I can really pinpoint to Avalon Beach and Mound Street Beach, which were areas of concern to a lot of the residents down there, there was four of them, two on each one.
Okay. And two of them were homeless?
Two or three of them were homeless. They're primarily in the homeless.
Is there, is there an issue related to public intoxication generally in various areas around the city, specific spots?
Yeah, there is. Yeah, it is a serious issue.
All right. And it's separate from homelessness per se as well, or?
It's separate from homelessness. There are, I mean, I'm not going to, you know, pinpoint that the only people that get intoxicated in the city of Quincy are homeless, but, you know, a lot of the homeless population, they seem to be out and about during, especially during the daytime hours.
Right.
So it kind of raises the people's awareness of it, but it's not particularly a homeless issue.
One of the unfortunate things, too, is that, however, with that, as it relates to the homeless issue, you guys presently have no real drop-off area specifically to move some of these folks during the day either, correct?
No. Unfortunately, we don't.
See, that's what's always been bothersome to me was that, that was why the expansion was built onto Father Bill's, was to provide that service.
The wet side was very effective. They call it the wet side.
Right.
And it was very effective.
And I wish there could be some movement to put that back there because that was a great relationship with the Quincy Police to be able to actually do something in response to that. So anyways, it was something that, geez, we worked that out in the '90s, and it's just unfortunate that they've made a decision not to keep that going, but.
I agree.
I would seriously consider approaching them to rethink that at this point because I thought it was a very effective service. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Any other counselors on this matter?
Chief, I just want to say personally, thank you, although I was out of town, and I know Counselor Guttrow carried the ball for both of us along with the mayor's office. And I did communicate with the counselor and with the mayor directly on the issues concerning the assaults in and around the Walston T Station. But I know that the great effort on your department's part, as well as conjunction with the MBTA police and the surveillance camera that they've got set up there in the parking lot certainly provides, you know, some comfort to folks that, you know, their police department is out there working on their behalf. So I just wanted to say.
Thank you. It seems to be effective. We've had no further incidents since, but we are remaining vigilant.
Understand, understand that you are, and you've got, as well as the, you've got plainclothes officers out there.
And the MBTA police have been very, very helpful. You know, they were, they were right with us, side by side, and trying to combat this issue.
Well, it's much appreciated on behalf of the folks I represent and Counselor Guttrow as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Getting back to item number seven.
Number seven, Mr. President, on the agenda, Councilant 2010193, amend Title IX, Peace and General Welfare, Chapter 9.20070. This was objected to at the June 21st meeting. Under the rules of the council, comes up at the very next meeting, this is the next meeting. Peter Dane at the City Council, by this order hereby establishes a noise-sensitive area pursuant to Section 9.20.7 of the City Noise Ordinance.
Most of you made the way of the reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The ayes have it. Counselor McNamee's order.
Counselor McNamee?
As you know, before we recessed for the summer, we did pass new noise ordinance. And something that was anticipated in that news, new ordinance, was the establishment of a noise-sensitive area. And tonight's order is my attempt to address what I have discovered to be an imbalance in my ward since I was elected five years ago. And it's essentially an imbalance between the competing interests of residential property owners and those that are running establishments that have cabaret and liquor licenses, essentially nightclubs at Marina Bay. Now, this is an attempt to recognize, given that very, very complex mixed-use area there, that we need more stringent standards, especially when we have a history of chronic noise conditions. Although I must tell you that during the current season, things have gone well. This is, this summer has been better than any other summer since I've been a ward counselor. But having said all that, we still need vigilant standards, and we also have to be sensitive to the fact that operators change. We may be very fortunate right now and have some very good conscientious operators that are concerned about being good neighbors, but this does change from time to time. We have liquor licenses transferring all the time at the Marina. So this ordinance essentially creates a more stringent set of decibel levels, and it also introduces an evening timeframe as opposed to the general citywide ordinance that is a daytime and nighttime timeframe. Now, I've had the City Solicitor's Office review this for its legal sufficiency, and they've found that it is in good form legally. And what I would like to do tonight is I would like to pass this ordinance with the favorable consideration of my colleagues.
Thank you. Counselor McNamee moves adoption of 2010-193, seconded by Counselor Guttrow. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor McFaulen?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be voting against this ordinance tonight, and I am for a number of reasons. The first reason is we passed a noise ordinance about 60 days ago in here, which called for the appointment of a noise advisory board, which has not yet, you know, has not yet been put together. We also put, you know, restrictions on noise in there, and based on a report that I received from the, you know, police department, we've had exactly two calls on noise this summer at Marina Bay since the ordinance was in place. One of the calls was on Sunday, June 27th, at 10:28 in the evening, and the second call was on Sunday, August 1st, at 7:19 PM. Hardly enough to make you want to make the ordinance more stringent than it is. I think what we need to do is, I think we need to take a year here and see what the report of the, of the ordinance is after a full year of watching the ordinance in place. And at that point in time, we feel certain areas need to be tightened up. We could take a look at the whole ordinance, but, you know, this is kind of like spot zoning. We're taking an area and we're saying, the other numbers are okay for the rest of the city for residential areas or commercial areas, but this particular area, we're going to, you know, you know, do something different on with really out having the data at this point in time to back that up. So I will be voting against this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other further discussion on the motion? Seeing none?
Councilant 2010193, Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Guttrow.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor McFaulen. Counselor McNamee.
Yes.
Counselor Palmucci.
Yes.
Counselor Ramondi.
Yes.
President Coughlin.
Yes.
Seven to two, the motion passes. This is a tenant of the original order, which is the noise ordinance. This brings it to the higher level, and there is other tenants that need to be enacted, mainly the committee being number one, but this allows us, gives us something to study. It's not an ordinance in its own, it's a part of the other ordinance.
Very good.
Go to the mayor for his signature in the morning. Seven to two.
Okay. Next item on the agenda.
Next item on the agenda, I believe, is number nine, contamination at Town Brook on August 9, 2010. Commissioner Prendeville. And then some gifts, and we're out of here. Thank God.
The 11:00?
Counselor Guttrow moves waiving of Rule 24, the 11:00 rule. All in favor, say aye. I don't hear any. Heard one.
I agree. Let's call it. Yeah, everybody?
Opposed?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you very much. On Tuesday, August 10th, at approximately 1:45 PM, the Quincy Fire Department received a call that there was a odor at 1510 Hancock Street, a suspicious odor. And they went down, they did find a strong odor of fuel oil. They did a further investigation, and they found that they saw a sheen on the Town Brook. At that point, they contacted the DPW. The DPW had received calls like this in the past. We told them we would meet them at the intersection of the parkingway and Granite Street. There is a dewatering station for the MBTA at that location. I met the fire department, myself, city engineer went out. We contacted the MBTA to ask them to come out and open the vault. They, they sent an engineer. At that time, we did notify DEP that we had an issue. We put the crews in a couple of different spots in the Town Brook, put out some booms to control the sheen. MBTA came out, opened up the vault. We did go down, we did smell the fuel. They have this pumping station, and there are two pumps in there. And what they do is they control the groundwater, so there's no flooding of the tracks. They are also controlling the groundwater in that whole area. It acts like a cone. At that time, the MBTA notified their environmental people, which called an environmental cleanup crew to come out. They came in, they took over the site, started to look further down, make sure that we weren't getting anything past Millistyle Road, that those booms were, you know, containing everything. They have taken over the site. They come out daily, check the, the booms, see if there's any other contamination, and they will do that for the rest of the week. They've also hired an engineer. The MBTA is saying that it is not from their tracks. They're saying it is from that cone, that they're getting some kind of contamination into their pump station. They own it once they pump it, and it goes into our system.
Counselor Guttrow?
Mr. President, through you to the Commissioner. Do you have any sense as to volume released?
We don't.
A gallon, 100 gallons, a million gallons? What do you, what do you?
We don't. I, I would think it was probably under five gallons.
Under five gallons?
Yeah. It was like a sheen. It wasn't, this happened two years ago, or prior to us getting here, and they couldn't find the source of it. The MBTA is pretty adamant, saying that it could be from the surrounding buildings, but as soon as their pump picks it up, they own it. They were very responsive, and they've taken full control and full responsibility of.
Is the source eliminated?
Pardon me?
Is the source eliminated?
No. I cannot say that.
So no one's found a source?
It comes sporadic. I mean, it was two years ago.
Do you know where the origin is? Is it from the pump station? Is it equipment failure?
No, it's not equipment failure.
So you don't know?
No. Nor, nor, nor do they.
And, and, I mean, that's not really a reasonable answer. I mean, should, are we asking them to further investigate? You think that's the situation?
No, no, no. They have hired an engineer.
Okay.
They're working with the MBTA, working, they're going to have meetings with us to try to pinpoint where the contamination is coming from.
And how many times over the past year has there been a release, you know?
Prior to us getting here, so.
Just this, this time this year?
That I'm aware of, yes.
And in past years?
When I, when I say it was, you know, it wasn't 100 gallons, it was, it was something more of a sheen.
Five. I got you. And you absorbed it quickly?
We did, and the booms are still there.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ramondi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, for being here. I happen to be at the site, Mr. President. It's right in the, in my backyard, and I had noticed the odor, which is a very strong odor. But I've experienced this in the past, Mr. Commissioner. That's why I didn't call. It's just one of those things, unfortunately, that happens. I'm going to be much more diligent in the future because there was some asphalt work being done up the street, and I didn't know whether that odor or any of that. I'm not an expert in this areas. I have no idea how much was spilled, but the, the physical evidence of gasoline in the water was visible for two or three hours. I mean, there was a steady.
Right. There was a sheen that you could see sitting on it.
But there was a steady stream of, so I don't know what that means, whether five gallons or, but from a good amount of time, there was a visible presence of oil or gasoline or whatever it was into the Town Brook and just flowing down the brook by Dennis Sweeney's rental home, by my home, and around behind the chamber. So I appreciate the effective work of the Department of Public Works, but I think at this point, we need to find out where this is coming from and how to stop it. So where do we go from here, Mr. Commissioner? Do, do we wait for the MBTA to provide us with their report as to perhaps the source? Do we have our own independent analysis?
We're, we're working with Captain Bryan, Sean Hardy, they're working together. It did become a, once the fire responded, they took over the site as well as the MBTA with their engineer and their environmental company. So they are working together, and I'll, as soon as we get some kind of resolution, I'll let you know. I do not want to stand up here and tell you that it's something that we can have within 30 days because they were aware of it a couple of years ago, and they have not been able to pinpoint it since then.
Any damage to the environment, the habitat, any smelt eggs? Any, is there any, any attempt by the MBTA to take responsibility over doing an analysis over that section of the brook, which is a smelt-spawning area on both ends?
That's something we can talk to them about.
Yeah, okay. Mr. President, if you could, if, if other folks have some questions, fine. If not, if we could give this a number and put it into the Environmental Committee and maybe have some follow-up meetings once the MBTA report becomes available, and then maybe have the MBTA in to find out what their source is, what the Department of Environmental Protection, what they're saying about it, what, what their input is, and then whatever environmental damage might have been, whatever damage might have been evidenced by, by this incident. So would I ask you, Clerk, to put a number on it and refer it to the Environmental Committee?
We're in the process of doing that as we speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of a gift of $10,000 for Dare from the Copeland family. Counselor Palmucci moves acceptance, seconded by Counselor McFaulen. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. With a letter of appreciation from the City Council. Number 13, acceptance of a gift of $500 for Dare from the Bernazani School class of 2010. Number 13, acceptance of a gift of $500 for DARE from the Bernazani School class of 2010. Counselor La Forest moves acceptance of that, seconded by Counselor Guttrow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Once again, with a note of appreciation to the Bernazani School class of 2010 for their generous gift of DARE. Item number 14 is the acceptance of gift of $325 for DARE from various donors. Counselor Finn moves approval, excuse me, acceptance of that gift, seconded by Counselor Ramondi. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Number 15, communication, joint petition from Verizon, New England Mass Electric, relocate pole on Mechanic Street. I'm doing your job, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. I will sign up, Mr. President. Speaking of Mechanic Street, I was just talking to Counselor Finn about this order. We have a communication here from Verizon and Mass Electric for, to move a pole on Mechanic Street. Planner, Mr. Harrington, informed me this evening that there's no, there's, this movement of this pole is holding up some work we're doing on Mechanic Street. No public hearings required, so if we could move this tonight, we would appreciate it and the plan to, but we'd appreciate it. The next one is not, the next one needs to go to committee and have a public hearing date set. I mean, again, this is a plan.
Given, given the information provided right correctly, I would suggest that we move it this evening.
Counselor Finn moves that we approve this on, on the motion. Counselor Ramondi?
Where's the pole and where's it going?
Okay, let me read it to you, Counsel. I'm sorry. This petition from Verizon, New England and the Mass Electric Company for the relocation of one pole on Mechanic Street. This petition is required for the widening of Revere Road for the Quincy Concourse Program. A public hearing and notice of butters is not conquired. The petition proposes to relocate pole number seven on Mechanic Street by 30 feet southerly. This works, okay, we said that.
What's the address? What's the address of the existing pole? And where's it going?
It's at, it's in front of 11 Revere Road at the confluence of Revere Road and Mechanic Street, the inside corner, and it's going 30 feet back down Mechanic Street. So it's coming out of what's going to be, right now is not in the middle of the roadway, what will be, and it's moving at 30 feet southerly.
Have the owners, residents of 11 or 30, have they been notified of this change?
I believe that 11, 11, I believe 11 Revere Road. Mr. Counselor is on the ins, I think it's on the side of the parking lot. I don't believe it's on the side of the, the post, Post 95.
Okay.
As I look at this map.
And where it's going, number 30, is there a residence there?
There are not, it's not in front of a residence, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Guttrow?
Thank you, Mr. President. That pole is in my district and I did get an email from Mrs. Goodman. National Grid's been out there obstructing her access and egress on Revere Road and the quicker we get them out of there, frankly, the better. I appreciate Counselor Ramondi's questions about a butter notification and specific location. I think those are important. I'd prefer a, a public hearing, but I want to expedite this and minimize any disruption to any of the neighbors, so if the clerk is comfortable that this is not in front of another residence and that.
I'll double-check it before, if you want.
Had a good notification has happened, then I'd rather expedite it so that we could minimize disruption to the folks on Revere Road that are already enduring a lot right now.
One more, because of the widening, it's presently in the, in the roadway, in the proposed roadway, so they're moving it 30 feet to get it out of the roadway. And I have one little map here for, it's on the corner. What is your place?
We have a motion by Counselor Finn, seconded by Counselor Guttrow, to approve the relocation of this pole.
To Councilor 205.
Council Order 2010-205. Call the roll.
Counselor Finn. Counselor Guttrow.
Yes.
Counselor Keenan. Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor McFarland. Counselor McNamee. Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Ramondi.
President Coughlin.
Yes. Nine members. Nine members having voted in affirmative. That matter is approved.
The next item, Mr. President, Councilor 2010206. Another communication dated July 19th from Verizon and Mass Electric to place one new pole on Muirhead Street, approximately 80 feet, 85 feet westerly of pole number four. This is necessary to relocate wires from over public, private property to the public way. A public hearing is required, needs to go to committee.
Mr. President, this is in my district and I know not the specific location on Muirhead, but I know that there are issues and interest of residents on Muirhead, so I encourage you to set the public hearing date and I'll hear from the neighbors subsequently of the butter notification and make a determination after that point if I would support this.
Very good. Mr. Clerk, send to Public Works Committee. Public Works Committee.
And instead of hearing today.
Instead of public hearing.
Okay, we're going to do these gifts.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We have already done those.
Oh, is that it?
This is it, I have no further items.
We have no further items on the agenda. As, as this is a special meeting, we cannot consider any other matters other than those which are before us.
The next meeting is.
The next meeting of the City Council is September 7th. And in closing this meeting tonight, I would ask all of my colleagues just to have a brief moment of silence in memory of Ray McEckren. Many of you remember him, Ledger reporter, who covered many of these meetings as well as licensing's board hearings. I'd ask you all to stand for a moment of silence in grateful memory of Ray's service to the community and to the City Council and to the licensing board by virtue of the work he did for the Patriot Ledger. Thank you very much and this meeting is adjourned.